We'll call the city council meeting to order. If everyone could silence their cell phones and please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we have one proclamation tonight. Councilman Bothwell is going to present it. I have on here for Kayla Schaefer. Are you here? Yes, come on forward. This is a proclamation proclaiming September 21st, 2014 as Day of Peace.
Hi, thanks for being here. The City of Asheville proclamation, whereas the ideal of peace embraces the deepest hopes of all people and remains humanity's guiding inspiration because the promotion of peace is vital for the full enjoyment of all human rights, and whereas in 1981, the United Nations first established September 21st as an annual day of nonviolence and ceasefire, and whereas the United Nations dedicates the International Day of Peace to nonviolence and cessation of hostilities and invites all nations and all people to commemorate the day through educational efforts, public awareness, and adherence to the global ceasefire, and whereas Day of Peace activities around the world include videos, peace education programs, films, peace marches, concerts, poetry readings, prayer ceremonies, art exhibits, vaccination campaigns, memorial services, school assemblies, family reunions, and sporting events, all made possible by the laying down of arms, and whereas in Asheville, the following groups and businesses, along with schools, faith communities, artists, and individuals are in support of the International Day of Peace, bringing together hundreds to affirm our community's commitment to building peace through nonviolence, including the North Carolina Peace Action, UNC Asheville Student Government Association, WNC Women Warriors, New Hope Presbyterian Church, the First Congregational United Church of Christ, the Unitarian Universalist Congregation of Asheville, the Ethical Humanist Society of Asheville, AMVETS Post 333, Veterans for Peace Chapter 099, and Peace is Possible, North Carolina. Now therefore, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, does hereby proclaim September 21st, 2014, as a Day of Peace in the City of Asheville, and calls upon the people of Asheville to observe this day in our community as we imagine, build, cultivate, expect, and celebrate peace on earth.
So I wanted to thank Mayor Manheimer for signing this proclamation and the entire city council for supporting it, and on behalf of the 10 organizations listed. Also, there were two organizations I just want to mention that were put on this, and one is Peace Day Asheville, which actually got one of the activities started, and then Vibrant Asheville Business. So in addition, I wanted to talk about just two activities that are happening here in Asheville to celebrate International Day of Peace. The first one is at UNCA, I think on the Quad, and it's from noon until 10:00 PM on that Sunday, September 21st. There will be poetry readings, art exhibits, music, and a Google Hangout, and what that allows is for people to come and speak and visit with other people all around the world that are celebrating this International Day of Peace. And by the way, International Day of Peace lasts for approximately 48 hours when it starts in the Pacific and moves all the way through, so it is a longer than 24-hour period of time. The second event that I wanted to mention is being held at Handmade in America on Lexington Avenue, sponsored by Peace is Possible, North Carolina, where the film Peacemakers, an interview with international peacemakers Jeremy Gilly and Prem Rawat, that's an interview with them, and that will happen at 5:30, and everyone is invited, and these events are free. So we hope that the community of Asheville will come out and celebrate the International Day of Peace, and thank you so much.
Just an announcement, the city received some super exciting news today that our federal grant application for the River redevelopment project known as RAD-TIP has been funded. And that -- yay! And that amounts to $14.6 million of the $30 million plan, and this did not happen in isolation. Today, Senator Hagan's office called me to let us know that we were funded, and with the help of Riverlink, the Riverfront Redevelopment Commission, Patty Turner, our co-chair, is here tonight, Buncombe County, and the Tourism Development Authority, the North Carolina DOT, the Land O'Sky Regional Council, former city leaders, and as well as Representative Meadows and Representative McHenry who signed letters in support. So this is really exciting for Asheville, transformational for the River Arts District, and a great step in the right direction. So exciting news, exciting news tonight for Asheville. Yay! Okay. So moving on to the consent agenda, is there anyone who has any item on the consent agenda that you would like to have handled separately or have a question or comment about? Have a motion?
Move approval. Second?
All right. Anyone wishing to provide a comment on the motion to approve the consent agenda? All right, seen none? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? We do not have any presentations and reports tonight. We're moving straight into our public hearings. The first, let's let the mass exodus of staff, we're here for the consent agenda. The first is a public hearing to consider adoption of the Haywood Road Form Base Code for the Haywood Road Corridor, and the hard-working Alan Glines is here to make the presentation. And I know there's a number of folks here from West Asheville. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of city council, members of the public, I'm really happy to be here to bring you the draft, the final draft, for the Haywood Road Form Code, represented by this map, covering Haywood Road corridor area. The Haywood Road Form Project covers West Asheville, Haywood Road from the river over to Patton Avenue. It's about two and a half miles, been a study in place for the last year or so, falling on the heels of the Vision Plan, which took a little longer than that. Form codes are a little different from standard zoning that we put in place. It emphasizes building form, the character of the area is enhanced and protected, because buildings and their defining features and their placement in relation to street and sidewalk create a strong neighborhood context. The draft that you are reviewing does include six different Haywood Road districts, and they're scaled to what's happening in that part of the corridor. The goal of the plan was to emphasize growth and redevelopment, so it's a redevelopment proposal. The areas in red and orange, and here as well, at Patton Avenue, they provide areas for continuation or expansion of our core area, the area of, the key areas of Haywood Road that define the character for Haywood Road, the old West Asheville sections. So the expansion area will carry forward that from each core area itself. The areas in green were felt to be areas perfect for residential uses, but also commercial uses could happen in those districts as well. With the length of the corridor and the density of the area, we couldn't have just one district that would cover the entire two and a half miles, because there is different character. And when you do make a core area or some area like that, you want it to be very successful. You want every business going in there to be successful, so it's sort of concentrated in a way. The areas down towards the river are smaller lots, they're not as deep, and so there's just not as much potential there. So these areas are called traditional and live work, focusing on smaller-scale development. With the plan, one of the nice features of the plan is more graphics that explain the concepts that are proposed in the form itself. So there's a lot more drawings and explaining what we're looking for when we're talking about building height, for example, or other things, penetration transparency in the building. Those things are defined and described, so the public or developer or someone who has a project could come in and read that, and not necessarily need an architect to figure that out. Other things are also illustrated and defined, things that are important for the corridor itself. Each district, and there's six of them as I said, provides an intent statement that shows, talks about what the goals are for that district, drawings, and maybe some characteristic And then because we're trying to make Haywood Road one of our most complete streets, our multimodal street, there's a lot of descriptions about sidewalk crossings, the width of the sidewalk, how parking should happen, and that sort of thing, because we're taking complete streets seriously on this proposal, for sure. And then each district will cover how the lot is used, where to site buildings, and how that works, and also features about building height and transparency, which is windows, doors, and openings. So every one of those six areas has a code to follow that, so folks can follow what's allowed and how it works. With the Haywood Road Form Code, we're not entirely away from having a land use table, but it is, it follows along, and it's helpful for this district to kind of explain what we expect to happen where. And I want to point out that we are adding, in this section, to the use table, light industrial, which we feel is a great addition to our use table, probably ran to other districts throughout the city, but light industrial allows a lot of job-producing businesses to operate or open or expand on Haywood Road, and the industrial-type activity is contained in the building, so there's fewer impacts to neighborhoods. So we want to make sure that's kind of allowed use in the corridor. And then one other thing that is unique is, when the corridor abuts the residential neighbors on the backside, there will be landscaping in place for those property that have that neighbor, the residential neighbor, and often that neighbor's the backyard of a house depending on Haywood Road. So we want to be sure that there's a buffer in place, they can follow the Article 11 standard buffer, which is to be a 20-foot, this 20-foot wide buffer in this corridor, but they can also opt for the opportunity for a narrower planting area and a wall to provide privacy and keep it quiet for the residential neighbor. This is a redevelopment plan and proposal, and the parking standards are written to encourage redevelopment, so they're lighter, or there's less parking demand or requirements for off-street parking in this corridor area. And in the central business district zones now, which are the two West Asheville historic cores, there's no parking standard now, and so that has facilitated a lot of reuse of existing buildings, and that's where a lot of those restaurants have gone in, and that's where things, so it's sort of driven the success, and we have the same standard in downtown, it's been very helpful. Now, going forward though, all restaurants will have to provide some parking, because the consultant determined that some of that is bringing an impact to the corridor, especially for the neighbors who live on the backside, on side streets, or having their parking lots full with other patrons for other businesses. So it's trying to balance things out a little bit going forward. In addition to that, I'll just point out, or make you aware if you haven't already, that City Transportation Department will be pursuing a parking study for Haywood Road, and we will employ a consultant to count every space on the corridor, to study the uses, where the demands are, where there's excess parking, and then develop a set of strategies for the city, to present to the city, that could be private sector proposals for parking, or city initiatives that we could work with. We feel like there's a lot of parking on the corridor, a lot of it's underutilized at this present time. A lot of the places of worship have large parking fields and, you know, limited times when they're actually needed, so maybe there's a way to facilitate some of that. Since the plan, the official planning effort started, which was, you know, we'd do notifications and that sort of thing, we do letters to all of the neighbors, and then all the property owners, and then all neighbors within 200 feet of the corridor. So we've sent out about 900 letters for both the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing and the city council hearing, and through that period of time, I've received about 50 correspondences from folks, phone calls, or emails, that kind of thing. Some people dropped in the office. So most folks, when they understood the plan, or heard about the plan, they expressed support for it, or were glad that it was heading in that direction. There was very few concern about what the impact would be for most folks. Considering this plan, staff feels that it does meet city council strategic goals, and I know in the period of writing this, my staff report, and noticing that your strategic operating plan came out amended for the 14, 15-year, I still note that we are in compliance because you have two locations where you mentioned the goals of extending Form Base Code and other goals like that for planning efforts throughout the city. The comprehensive plan recognizes that important corridors like this are the places where density can happen, there should be fewer conflicts with neighbors if we can have greater density and redevelopment on these quarters. This is where our bus line is, this is where our sustainability, sustainable development can happen. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the corridor or this plan, or we could have, I can answer questions after the public hearing process, however you prefer.
Does anyone have any questions before we open it up for a public hearing? Great job, and thank you for all your hard work through this process. All right, at this time, I want to open the public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to provide comment on this, this is the time. And as you're making your way forward, just please remember you'll have three minutes each, unless you're speaking on behalf of a group, and give us your name, and feel free to pull that.
Hi, my name is Deidra Duffy. I live at 67 Craggy in West Asheville. I've been part of this process, and Alan has done a great job in many aspects. I have concerns, though, about the increased density. This is much better, of course, than the old plan, but that was a mess. It's still, I think, is going to create a mess, and since I know you want this to be a model plan, I really suggest that you tone down the scale. For one, in the core district, originally, in one of the original drafts, there was a two-story maximum in order to keep, so that the new buildings wouldn't dwarf the historic buildings. All of a sudden, it scratched out, and there's a four-story allowed. I mean, that's just going to ruin the feel of that core district, as well as invite more and more residents to live there. I also think four stories is too much for the expansion district, as well, I think six stories is way over the top for the town district over by Haywood and Patton. You know, the area isn't, there's no room to expand, it's so tight. I live on a road that's a cut-through already, we're just seeing tons, I mean, it's just this mixed use of pedestrians and bicyclists and parked cars on the streets, and it's like a one-and-a-half-lane road, and our road is a cut-through, and with this, all this development, I'm just really concerned about just deterioration of neighborhoods, people getting run over. Okay, so then, other thing is the parking. I think that the parking requirement for residential needs to be more than one per unit. It should be like per bedroom or something, because, you know, most people, there's more than one person living in a house in a residency, or, you know, I don't know how you figure it out, but I don't think that's enough parking, because I'm just concerned that the neighborhoods are going to become the spillover parking, I mean, it already is happening, and it's just going to just keep extending, and I just don't think that's good for the community. I mean, part of the three-pronged thing of smart growth is community, and the people in the community are going to feel the impact of this, all this, you know, density allowable, you know, residences as it goes up and up and up, and so, and also, I had a hard time in the plan, seeing where the green space requirement was. They talked about it at the meeting, early meetings, they talked about, yeah, we're going to make sure that there's a green space, but it was a little confusing, maybe it's in there and I couldn't get it. So, you know, another thing that, I think, you know, you can allow more height later if, say, two-story maximum in the core district, say, is what you say, and then you go, okay, we could expand, you know, I'd say, let's not get too big, like those teachers that are too loose in the beginning, and then they have to tighten up on the classroom. It's better to start tight at first and then be more allowable. And if you notice in the pictures, a lot of the pictures were one- and two-story buildings, and you don't even, the plan doesn't even allow for one story, you know, because that feels better. People -- was that my time? Okay, thank you, and I hope you consider those comments.
Is there anyone else wishing to provide comment? Yes.
My name's Paul Olszewski. I live on Craggy Avenue near Duffy as well, and I wondered if there was any consideration. We know right now, there's the Village on Haywood that's going in, which is going to bring in, I think, 150 more residents into our block, and then a few houses down the street from me, there's the East-West Craggy Development, which is going to allow somewhere around 48 more houses. So that's going to put about 300 more cars in the three, four-square-block area of our neighborhood. Right now, if you're trying to drive behind Ice's Restaurant, you know, there's so much business coming into those, into Haywood Road right now, that people are parking halfway, about 500 feet down from Haywood Road, into the community, and I'm wondering if there's been any sort of, if there's been any traffic calming studies for that area, and I feel like those studies need to be done now before the development happens, because once the development happens, it's going to be too late, and it's just going to be a total mess. And I know it's really difficult to get out on Haywood Road, so I was hoping that there might be some studies done as far as how much traffic is already heading through those neighborhoods, and there is no parking, except the park in front of all the residences' houses. I also know that the Purple District up here is a business district that, through Druid Road, I don't think it was ever supposed to be a road coming into a community, into a residential neighborhood, but somehow it did, and yes, it's a cut-through, there's people going 50 miles an hour down my street, and so with these added developments going in behind the Haywood Corridor, like within the area of green space that's back close to Patton Avenue, I'd just like to see some studies done, and maybe thoughts of redirecting traffic, maybe making one-way streets so people can't cut through, maybe this section right in the downtown West Asheville area becomes a walking district, and there is no driving through there, and somehow it's redirected through a busier street, or like State Street in Louisiana and Patton Avenue become main streets, but somehow there's a way to make it so it's safe. My kids cross Haywood Road when they come home from school, and so we're all concerned about the safety, basically, of people who are coming in from out of town, because Asheville's great, you know, West Asheville's a great place, but it's not so safe. There's seven bars in three square blocks right at the end of my street, and so those people have all been drinking, having a great time, and then they fly past my house. So I think it's something to consider before all this development happens.
Thank you.
City Council, Brother Christopher, Madam Mayor, there's a word called assume, and in my psychology class, we broke it down. Assume makes you mean she make an ass out of you and me. There was something that the guy that got up and gave his presentation did, which is an assumption. He brought up the churches and their parking lots, and they do have big parking lots, and usually they're used on Sundays and maybe Wednesdays, and the rest of the week, they're not used. But he was assuming that these churches would allow those parking lots to be used. I think that he did a proper, and he also mentioned doing a parking study. Seems to me that this is putting the cart before the horse. Parking is a very important aspect to any developments you make. If you can't park, what are you going to do? You know? I think that before the decision is made on this, whoever you contracted to do this design work should finish it by doing the parking. Find out, you know, if his plan will work. The key to this plan is parking. You know, how would you like it if you tried to get out of your driveway and someone has just parked close enough to where you can't pull out without hitting their car, because someone's at a restaurant? Or how would you like to be a member of a church, finding your parking lot full of people, and you haven't given consent for them to park there? So I think there's a lot of assumptions as far as parking. I think that that should be clarified before you make a decision on this nice little design work.
Good evening. I'm going to be speaking on behalf of WABA, so I want my 10 minutes. I have three other people left.
And state your name.
I'm Austin Walker, 52 Craggy Avenue. We had three of my neighbors here as well that just spoke. It's a Craggy show. I'm here as a resident of West Asheville, a WABA member, and on the Executive Committee of WABA. I'm also a property owner on Haywood Road. Today, tonight, I'm going to be speaking on behalf of WABA and our feelings on the process and the code that's being presented. But before I do that, I want to acknowledge our appreciation, my appreciation, as well as WABA's appreciation, of the process that was undertaken here. It was very thorough and had a lot of community input, and the Code Studios group was fantastic, and we appreciate the city investing in that. And in addition to that, I wanted to extend a decade-long of appreciation to Alan Glines. He's done a phenomenal job, and he's been a significant asset to the city as well as to West Asheville. He listens with an open mind, and he approaches things in a problem-solving manner, and we can't, we can't express enough appreciation for him being the integral connection between the West Asheville community, which is sometimes not in the hub of a lot of the Asheville decisions. So let's get to the code. WABA is in support of the code, and we are in support of the code because it incorporates the community vision and provides a development tool for the continued evolution of Haywood Road. This code has been presented, debated, modified, tweaked, discussed again, and finally approved at the plan and zoning level. The additional meetings that Alan went through and the Code Studios went through were very helpful, and they do ensure that this is the best code that we can present to you guys now at this time. That doesn't mean it won't change, or it doesn't need some level of flexibility for the continued evolution, but this is as good as it gets for the Haywood Road Vision Plan. That being said, it is still a development tool, and it still will need to evolve. It provides a format for private and public sector to invest in the development of Haywood Road in a manner in which the existing community has envisioned, and it discusses that in the plan itself as the Haywood Road Vision Plan. But that isn't the only, that's only part of the plan. If, I can maybe have you refer to page one, section 1.2, and I can put that up here, I There are 11 intentions listed here. Most provide direction for how the corridor will develop with private sector investment, and several intentions are of such that the small business and the property owners along Haywood Road, they can't achieve them individually. And that's where we need the city's support, and the city's actual dollar investment in the corridor. And specifically, these numbers are eight, nine, and 11, and somewhat 10 as well. And you'll see that all of these numbers are directly related to parking and transportation. We are already seeing high impact with parking issues, unsafe pedestrian experiences, and increased bicycle and bus ridership along the corridor. In fact, I'm told that bus ridership is the highest in the system, and I think the bike and ped counts from last year actually will show that the bike and ped mobility, multimodal usage along the corridor is the highest in the city as well. Transportation concerns were echoed by Code Studios in their charrette closing presentation, which was in September 2013. They identified the challenges along They identified the challenges along Haywood Road with sidewalk widths, utility placement, parking access, crossing safety, bike safety, and transit access, and encouraged us as a community to coordinate with the city and state on investments to improve these issues. That's not exactly something that, that community groups are great at, but we, we need your support to do that. So WABA is here tonight voicing great concern that we do not have a comprehensive transportation plan that would dovetail with the proposed Form-Based Code. It is strongly felt that for this Form-Based Code to succeed, the city of Asheville needs to provide resources to develop a comprehensive transportation plan that works in tandem with this new Form-Based Code. Haywood Road needs a transportation plan that will support the multimodal usage, as expressed in the original vision that was 10 years in the making, and realistically support economic development and increased business parking needs along the corridor. There are currently piecemeal solutions and private business arrangements in the works. But as with the Form-Based Code, it's WABA's belief that a comprehensive plan that encompasses all transportation modes and supports the anticipated increased needs is essential to ensuring the success of the plan, as you guys are going to adopt tonight, and the quality of life that exists on the corridor and in the surrounding neighborhoods. That's really all I have for my prepared statements. If I can just say a couple more words. We're really excited about what, what we, I say, we, I own a couple buildings along the corridor that I've invested heavily in. I've been involved with the Haywood Road Corridor Committee, was one of the original members. I've been involved with the historic districts over there, informing those. And I'm obviously a patron of many of the businesses over there. As well, my kids go to school over there, and I'm an active community member in the residential component of, of my life. We're really proud of what, what has become of, of West Asheville and, and the identity we have. We don't want to lose that identity. We're excited about the evolution of it. But we really need the city to step up with this new plan and invest in the infrastructure that we have over there, so that we can continue the quality of life, not only on the corridor, but in the neighborhoods. So, thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else?
I'm Lynda Geltz. I'm a resident of West Asheville, and I'm a practicing professional planner. And I've also been involved, like Austin has, since many years ago, when we started meeting as the Haywood Corridor Group, and started talking about the potential of Haywood Road and some of the issues that we were having. And I just, I don't have a lot to add to what he said, it's a lot of the same thoughts that I was going to say. But I want to really thank you for choosing West Asheville for this new type of zoning, and I'm just really very excited about it. It's, it's such an improvement on the current zoning, which is very suburban. If we had that zoning stay in place, and we still have all this growth that we're expecting, that the character of the corridor would just be destroyed. I mean, we would not have the walkable business area and the walkable area along Haywood Road, and the elements of the complete streets and things with our current zoning code. So we really need something new, and this is a really great plan, I think, to address a lot of the issues that we have. I also agree that we really need to look at the transportation issues and the parking issues. But I think that can happen in concert with this. You know, I don't think we need to hold this up to do that first. I think they all, they can all come together. And I just want to, to also say that, you know, really, a, a strong appreciation for the city and the staff, and how they ran this process, is a very open process, very accessible. They really encouraged lots of citizen involvement, business involvement, and they got it. And, had a lot of great, you know, meetings with a lot of people coming out and sharing their ideas, and, and I think the code reflects those ideas. And it also does incorporate the plans that are in place. So, I'm just, encourage you to, to adopt it. I, I think it's a, it's, it's, of course, it's going to be an experiment, it's a new thing, but I think, you know, we're, it's, it's time to jump off and try that. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hey, I'm Michael Conley, live on 67 Craggy. Moved here in 1985, North Carolina native, been around a long time. And moved over there when it was west, worst Asheville, you know, and seen a lot of changes come. And, and, you know, people tonight have mentioned the funk and the character and stuff, and it's what's drawn people to this area, and I think we're in danger of losing it, and I know we needed to make some, some changes, because we don't want industry and stuff like that, heavy industry on there, and we don't want 10-story hotels. But, I'm afraid we may have gone too far with this. In some instances, a little two-lane road with four-story wall-to-wall buildings, it's just going to be a little, it's going to be a mini-city. And it's really, really narrow streets, and it's going to be, I think, a little bit dark and canyon-y in there. And I wish there was some way we could keep a certain amount of one-stories even, and, and allow some two-story buildings in there. I think four-stories is too much, and there's going to be more people moving in there and living in the upper ranges, of course. And, and I don't think there's enough parking, and the parking for both some residents and for businesses is going to spread out into the neighborhoods quite far and, and quite often. It's already happening that when, you know, weekends roll around, especially in the summer, you're already getting people that are parking further and further out. And, I think that we should increase the parking requirements to closer to two per unit. And, I really wish we could figure out a way to keep some smaller buildings in there as they are approved in the future. And, if somebody comes up with a good two-story plan for, especially the Central Business District Corridor, I think there should be a way to allow that. And that everything doesn't have to be four-stories, and if we keep a little bit of mix of heights, I think it's going to be more appealing in the long run. I do appreciate the, the, that they're trying to increase the walkability, bikeability, and all that, with some of the pushouts from the curb and things like that. I think it's, it's going to be an improved plan, and I do appreciate some things that have went on and have happened. I was very disappointed that the charrette folks, they really didn't show, I think, an accurate representation. They didn't show four-story buildings wall-to-wall going down through there when they, we had our presentations. They showed a lot of two-stories and some three-stories, and they showed the shadows just going out like to the middle of the road and stuff. But, they're going to go a lot further than that in the winter and shade both sides of the street, and I don't think people are going to like that. And it's going to lose a lot of the funk. So, I'd like to figure out a way to, to keep that. And when you do another charrette, I'd like to see that the other sections of town have a really accurate representation.
Sir, I'm sorry. Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to speak? Yes.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Timothy Sadler, and wanted to quick weigh in on, on the Form-Based Code. We, we need more parking in West Asheville. There is no doubt about that. And, you know, also, the, the traffic is becoming really a nightmare on Haywood Road. And, with all that, you know, is out there in the future in terms of development potential, we, you know, outside-of-the-box thinking, I think, could be really critical. I actually have a, a friend who experienced similar growth in Indiana, in Indianapolis. Can't believe I just said that so poorly, but, anyway, they, what, what they did on a, on a main corridor was, they turned it to a one-way road. And that might be something to, to look at, is, you know, how making Haywood Road a one-way might loosen things up a little bit there. Thank you.
I am Liz Pryor, and I live at 123 Virginia Avenue, right off of Haywood, around the corner from Sunny Point. And one of the things that defines West Asheville is its characters everyone's mentioned. And one of the pieces of that is green space, which, like Sunny Point, is a wild success because people sit for hours and in a community in a green area with the flowers, and that, there's very little of that. For us to become a sort of homogeneous, you know, smooth, slick operation will completely undercut what's really there. The other piece for me, so I would really urge a huge emphasis on green spaces, whenever and wherever they could be put into, in any plan. But secondly, the, what was already mentioned, the traffic, I mean, nothing's even begun yet, and the traffic going out of the city down Haywood is, is wild. In the last year, it's increased, maybe doubled. And there are all these bicyclists, and all the cars, and the buses, and children, and people walking, and it's really become a congested corridor without anything even having been started. So I think we really need to pay attention to what's going on with that. And to have as much diversity in the planning, because the character of Asheville, of West Asheville is just so unique, and for us to become a sort of suburban slick mall will really be a sad piece for us to take part of. So, I thank you though for all your efforts and work. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak on this topic? All right, seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Questions, comments from Council?
Mayor. Yeah. Alan, can I ask you a couple questions? Can you speak, I've got a couple questions, but first, could you speak about the, the fact that if we approve this tonight, that it's not like a light switch going on and off? That this is an evolving process? And, and, and can you just talk about how you see this playing out over the years and maybe even the decades?
Well, I'll, I'll be glad to do that. And, what I'll mention is too, is when the downtown master plan was approved in 2009, we adopted code to enact the plan in 2010. I know we had some slow years there, but what we found out since then is we've seen some development come forward, but it hasn't been a rush, or like the dam hasn't broken and now we're flooded in downtown. And what we found was that there's a, there's a real, there's a real viability from an economic standpoint to reuse the existing buildings in downtown. And what's been happening on Haywood Road is the same thing. In, in the past, I'd say, 10 years, there have been a total of maybe five new buildings built from scratch. And, that's out of over 300 properties that line the corridor. So, I think that the future, I, I think we'll get more growth. Asheville's growing, and West Asheville is becoming more and more popular, but I do think it's going to be an incremental process. We, I think, I think changeovers in, in, in buildings will take a number of years before we get that kind of investment money coming back into Asheville and this corridor as well. Another thing about, if I can just respond to a comment, was there are a lot of very small parcels. And, as you know, it's hard for property owners to come together and all agree on changing out everything at the same time. So this is a, a long-term plan that would take 20 to 30 years really for a full build-out. It's not an instantaneous overnight process, it's very incremental. It's, it's, every owner, which is, there's a lot of local owners here, there's not, a lot of these letters did not go out of state, a lot of them stayed in our own community, so it's our neighbors. A lot of folks have their long-term investment, and it, it's a long-term investment strategy for them. It's not going to turn over overnight like they're going to sell to outsiders, and it's not going to be our developers anymore. It's our people here.
Great. And a second question, Alan. Speaking to the concerns raised by Ms. Duffy and Mr. Colony, Conley, about particularly around the six-story buildings in the town portion of the district, you just talk about that a little bit, the four and the six-story buildings, and, and he talked in terms of kind of a corridor of tall buildings, and, and I suspect that's not right, but can, maybe you can help us out on that a little bit?
Okay. So, in the quarter today, we have, this is the quarter here, Haywood Road, we have a lot of central, CB2, Community Business 2 is this pink area, CBD is light blue, and the bright red is highway business. So, all the area out there by Patton Avenue are zone highway business, allows 60 feet, which is six stories today. The areas that are institutional allow four stories, CB2 allows four stories, and the CBD sections allow seven stories. And that was a reduction from unlimited, because you remember back in 2010, when we converted the, our Central Business District to reflect the downtown master plan, we had to add a section for West Asheville, because it, it was all under the same CBD, which was unlimited height. We brought it to seven. So, we're not, the code, the form code itself is not getting out of scale per se, it's, it's also reflecting potential growth. You'll see that all the portrayals do show the buildings pulled forward. And if you look a little further along in the plan, there's also, at the two-story level, there's a step back. And the step back is to reduce the scale experience from the street, reduce that impact from the street, so it doesn't become a canyon, and that the other, upper stories, if any, would be set back a minimal amount. We have a similar thing in the downtown area, we feel like it's something that's been a positive addition to the, the form code. So, scale-wise, the experience will still be two stories, and then not every property is going to be sized to actually fit a four-story building. Even if the allowance is there for four stories or taller, it still has to park itself, it still has to fit on the lot. And, so there's a lot of built-in things that have to all be, all work together in order to get any, you know, buildings of scale. We, we do want some scale, we, we do want some investment here. We do want the upper stories to have flexible uses, could be office space or other commercial, but we really hope residential comes in, because this is where residential could really fit in. And, a comment about the, the parking and traffic, and if, if we can make this corridor pedestrian-oriented, pedestrian-friendly, then we're really supporting our transit. We've made a huge investment in transit. Additional people who live on the corridor can use the corridor. Biking and other things are also supported in this plan. Of course, it's not our road, we have to cooperate with DOT, and they're great, great partners for us. But it'll be an ongoing dialogue with the DOT to kind of make, implement the plan, it might be section by section, and that sort of thing. So, so the WABA folks were completely correct that we'll need some, you know, we'll be partnering with, with the DOT to make all these things work together, even the parking.
Thank you, Alan.
So I live and work in West Asheville. My house is on Euclid Boulevard in the yellow section down here, just behind that. I work in the Bledsoe Building, and so I spend a lot of time on the road. I'm really grateful for the 11 years of toil and time that folks have put into this really long, thorough planning process. And especially over the last year, as we had the consultant and had the charrettes, and I got to attend a couple of the charrettes and saw a lot of different folks showing up and really providing valuable input, and I see it reflected in this plan. Alan, I have just a couple of, it's actually just really one question. At the builder's first source site?
Yes.
Is that across from Battle Cat?
Yeah, the, in this area here, correct.
Okay. I was just kind of wondering, that's one of the larger parcels on the corridor, and in thinking about possible uses there, should a developer come in and want to do some multifamily housing there? I just wondered if the parking requirements were going to be, be able to allow something of scale with, with a great number of units? I just wondered if you could reflect on that?
The parking standard is expecting a lot of shared uses on the corridor, neighbor-to-neighbor, even on the same parcel, even in the same building. So when you have a, a lot of shared uses, you have the ability to actually, the business use isn't there at night sometimes, so the, the residents come back from work and they can park in their places, that kind of, it's a lot of sharing, so you don't have a lot of vacancy, so there's some turnover. The, the plan itself is recommending one parking space for every residential unit developed on the corridor. And I think a site like this, which has, it's one of the biggest properties on the corridor, you could get a larger project here and do the parking. The parking could be just surface lots, which, as we know, surface lots are cheap, and they do pull your density down. So it, it, it's a ratio there. And often, if you're structuring parking, you can build up the, the density, but you're paying for the you can build up the, the density, but you're paying for those parking spaces, and they're substantial amounts of money. So it, it's a trade-off thing. I think anyone who would come here, they've got great potential. We want the buildings pulled forward on the street. We want them to address the street, make great sidewalk, and then have the parking tucked in the back, you know, in parking lots, so.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a few things about traffic and parking and pedestrian experience. First of all, the, the city has begun to reinvest in traffic calming measures in neighborhoods beginning this year. And some of that stuff is happening in West Asheville. And our road resurfacing budget is, was also doubled this last year. And recently, Vermont was resurfaced, and Sand Hill is underway right now. So we're, we're making some of the kind of foundational infrastructure investments that we need to make right now. As far as where this goes regarding parking, there's certainly a lot of traffic. A lot of that traffic is parking down in the neighborhoods, turning two-way streets into one-way streets that require a great deal of cooperation by drivers, sometimes hundreds and hundreds of feet from one another as they try to determine who's going to be able to go next on any given narrower street. And so as, as I think about parking possibilities in West Asheville, I'm really glad that we're going to have a plan going forward. I'm certainly interested in examining a lot of different ways of approaching this. There might be some permit parking. There might be some one-way-ing of streets to, to allow for, for some of that spillover. I'm also interested in looking at metering some of the on-street parking to see if we can turn that parking over more quickly as folks are, are coming into businesses in the way that we do downtown. As far as transit possibilities and encouraging greater transit use along that corridor, something I'd like to be able to explore is a shorter route that runs a, either a loop from Haywood to Patton to downtown to the River District, or something that just runs from corner Haywood and Patton to the River District to downtown on a much greater frequency that would provide a user-friendliness that would be superior to what we, what we're doing now. The comment was made about Druid behind the office park there. And it's a really, I think it's a really important thing to look at going forward. There's, there is a lot of, a lot of cut-through there into a very quiet residential neighborhood. And so when folks say people are flying up that road doing 50, that's not an exaggeration. That's the scene it. And we've been working with the DOT to try to improve pedestrian safety. But as anyone who's driven Haywood Road sees, the crosswalks, A, are not frequent enough, B, are not observed by motorists, C, are not necessarily in the right place. There's a lot of folks who have too far to go to get to a crosswalk when their car is right across the street that they're trying to get to. So really examining how we're going to move those pedestrians across the street, I think is going to be really important. It's really interesting that further up the street, across from the church, up at the fire station, they have a little short yield to pedestrian sign in the middle of the street. That seems to be quite effective. It's, it's eye-catching, as opposed to the ones that are 10 feet off the ground at the other crosswalks that don't necessarily tell drivers what to do. They just tell drivers, hey, there's a crosswalk. And they may not know that the pedestrians have the right-of-way in those situations. So I'll be real interested in seeing how, how much further can we get with that pedestrian safety. If we are trying to create a better pedestrian experience with the code, we're going to have to address all that stuff. And lastly, as far as this whole, this, this code goes, I think it really acknowledges that this Haywood corridor is an urban center, and it's going to have urban building to reflect an urban environment. And trying to make that as walkable and as multimodal as possible, I think is just really facing the reality of where this is going. Being able to preserve the kind of peace and calm of the neighborhoods on either side of the road is going to be our continuing challenge going forward. But there's no question that Haywood Road is an urban corridor. And I really appreciate all the hard work that's gone into, kind of taken a sober look at that. Thanks.
I'd be glad to offer a motion. Actually, we need two motions. Quick comments. Thanks again to staff. Judy Daniel was the planning director. It was on duty when this was first conceptualized. And this is our, the downtown master plan is a form-based code of sorts. But outside the Central Business District, this is the first run at doing this. And we all took a deep breath. All of us on council, and I know the staff did, especially because it's, it's new, it's different. It really feels to me like it's win-win-win. We, we are moving toward a more rational approach to, to have the kind of community we, we want to evolve there. It's, it's a win for developers. There's more predictability. Land values, I think, will be better. Affordability, transportation, many things that have been said here. To the folks that have expressed concerns, I would just like to highlight, change has been happening fast on Haywood Road under the existing code. And I think just about everybody's agreed that that's not the form that we want, would have wanted things to take. So change is a market-driven thing. It's a culture and human-driven thing. And change is coming one way or the other. But I, for one, I'm happier with this, this path that we've put ourselves on. And, you know, from the community-wide context, we, council and staff, we're very eager to see how this experiment, if you will, would work. And a form-based code is a successful way that other cities plan and administer land use regulations. So I'm eager to see us move forward. I agree, Gordon, parking and transportation, we need to, we need to have a timeline and be serious about how we take those on as we go forward. So I'm supportive, obviously. And with that, I move to approve the Haywood Road Form Code Amendment, and the council find that the request is reasonable in public interest and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans, because the proposal encourages denser, sustainable infill development, and will facilitate creating strong, safe, mixed-use neighborhoods, focusing redevelopment efforts to include job growth, housing, recreational, multimodal transportation for a high quality of life, and based on information provided during the hearing.
Second. We have a motion and a second. And, and I would just add that one of the, you know, the only other similar form-based code that the city has embarked upon is the downtown master plan, which was a very community-based process with, with a lot of committees focused on different parts of that plan. And, and one thing that's worked well with that plan now is it's a very use, it's, it's a usable tool in guiding the development downtown. And I think that we, as a council, were really interested in seeing our urban corridors rezoned using form-based code, because it's a, it's a more usable tool. It helps people see and vision what, what will eventually come to be in those corridors. But importantly, it's a community-based process. So, so what we're adopting tonight is not a plan that the city council designed. The city council didn't have a paternalistic top-down, this is what we want to see in West Asheville. Instead, it was a grassroots process where West Asheville came together. And not without disagreement, obviously, from time to time. But it is a product produced by that community, and the city's role in that is to help facilitate that process. But now we have a nimble tool to use to guide us in the future of this, of this corridor. And one of the reasons that Haywood Road was selected for this process is we knew your community could do it. You were already so organized. You had all of your groups ready to go. Everyone had a very strong opinion about what it should look like. And they were ready to participate in that process. And we wanted it to be successful and be a model for us to do this in other areas of the city, like the Merriman Avenue corridor, or, you know, maybe the Tunnel Road corridor in East Asheville. But, but we were, we were hopeful and thought the, the greatest area for success would be Haywood Road. So thank you all, community of West Asheville, for working so hard to produce this form-based code and allowing us to work with you and getting it, getting it adopted. And, and then maybe you'll help, you know, kick off this process in other areas of town and share your war stories and your do's and don'ts, and, you know, maybe a little seminar, or something like that. Anyone else? We've got a motion and a second? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have a second amendment, a second motion we need on this before we move on.
I'll be glad to do that as well, Mayor. I move to adopt the zoning map amendment to implement the Haywood Form Code for the properties identified in the proposed zoning map. And the council find that the request is reasonable and in the public interest and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans, because the amendment supports denser, sustainable infill development, and will facilitate creating strong, safe, mixed-use neighborhoods, focusing development efforts to include job growth, housing, recreation, and multimodal transportation, and based on information provided during the hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most in passes. All right, thank you very much. We're going to slowly segue into our second and last public hearing as we do change out in attendance. It's got a shine on it.
It's very shiny.
Shine on it. While everyone's getting settled, I'll just announce that the next item and last item on our public hearing agenda is a public hearing to consider a conditional zoning for Graymont Village Apartments located on Sardis Road from Industrial District and Commercial Industrial District to RM16 Residential Multifamily High Density District, conditional zoning, for the construction of a multifamily apartment development. And we have Jessica Bernstein, who's here to make the presentation, but we're not quite assembled. We're almost assembled in the audience. Just one more moment while everyone gets seated. I think we're almost ready. All right, Ms. Bernstein, I think we're ready to proceed with this Item B of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. As the mayor stated, this is a proposed conditional zoning from Industrial to RM16 to construct a multifamily residential development project. The total project site is, I'm going to first explain, and this map is helping to illustrate the project, the overall project area. It consists of two parcels with a combined area of just over 41 acres. But as you can see, those parcels are highlighted in red. One is within the city limits right here, and then the bulk of the site is outside of the city's jurisdiction. It's within Buncombe County. So while it's, there's an overall project to look at, the city is only responsible for reviewing the portion that's on the city's parcel. But I think it's helpful to see where this is the overall land area, and it also provides some context for the area. I've included the zoning map so that you can see the city's portion, the city's parcel, the flag lot is split-zoned industrial and commercial industrial. And then zoning in the area includes commercial industrial, it's straight industrial. And then in the county, it's Employment District and R3. The project site is on Sardis Road, as you can see here, Sand Hill Road and Sardis Road. And the Exhibit B map, I apologize, this is a little shiny, but the Exhibit B map gives you a better look at just the city's portion that you're looking at. Here's the split-zone line. It's a flag portion, the flag pole portion of the lot, that is the CI. Right here is Sardis Road. This is Industries for the Blind. As you can see, the site is currently undeveloped. It's a little hard to see on the, the aerial, but this portion right here is a 70-foot-wide easement for a high-voltage power line, connects back here to this power station. This is nearby uses include a roofing manufacturer, HVAC. And then right here is the site where the county's portion of the same project is proposed. It has been approved by the county. And then just off the map here in industrials, the Polylinks, which is another manufacturing operation. So this, this map, I just wanted to include so that you could see that overall project. Again, here is Sardis Road. This is Graymont Lane, which is the sole access into the site. That's within the county. Here's our city's parcel. So you can see this is just a small portion of the project, but the overall project is a total of 356 units, one, two, and three-bedroom configurations, dispersed over 14 total buildings, residential buildings with one clubhouse. There's over 700 surface parking lots throughout the site, as well as required open space. There's a stream buffer coming through on the city's portion that will remain undisturbed. And that kind of, that stream buffer area splits, as you can see, the city's portion of the site with the, with the counties. But for your review, here we have the city's flag lot, and I've sort of changed the orientation a little bit. But as you can see, Sardis Road, the site's access via Graymont Lane, and then you come into the city's portion here. There's 108 units on the city's site, four buildings. They're three-story and three-four split configuration. All the landscaping that's required by code is included on the plans with that open space that's primarily within the, the stream buffer where development would not be able to, to take place. The site plan review aspect of, of this proposal is fairly straightforward, and you saw that in the TRC staff report, for the most part. From a site plan perspective, it complies with the city's minimum technical standards. The aspect that we're focusing on really here is the rezoning request. The site is currently zoned. We discussed industrial with a small portion of commercial industrial. And, and so the applicant has to request this rezoning, because in industrial, the maximum residential density is only two units per acre. It's about 11.8 acre site. They would only be able to get about 24 units. They proposed 108, which is why they're seeking the RM16 zoning. When staff is, is determining the maximum residential density that an applicant can get based on a site, we look at the overall parcel. It came up, and I'm sure you saw in the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes, that the applicant was suggesting that we should evaluate the residential density on the site by, by excluding the stream buffer area. But that's not the practice of the planning department. We look at the parcel. The parcel is 11.8 acres with the 108 units that they're proposing. That's about nine units per acre for this, for this project. The project was approved with conditions, as I mentioned, by the TRC. That was on July 21st. And no communication has been received from, to me, from, from the public. The project, when it was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, that was on August 6. And that resulted in the recommendation by the commission for approval before three vote. There are commissioners, after lengthy discussion, the commissioners that were in favor with the project were so, felt so, they agreed with adding needed residential units in this part of town. They felt that the site was not suitable for industrial uses, and believed that the approval of the county's piece further supported the city's approval of this, this portion. The commissioners who were opposed to the project felt that the application did not meet the city's goals and objectives for affordability, maxim- meet the city's goals and objectives for affordability, maximizing residential density, and that there was not a really clear case made that it's insufficient, or that it's not a suitable site for industrial uses. As you saw in the staff report, there's a lot that we've put in about how the project does or does not comply with the city's goals and objectives as well as the comprehensive plan. There are very clear policies in the comprehensive plan, very clear statements in the comprehensive plan that say that we should, the city should, retain our industrially-zoned properties, that we don't have a sufficient amount of industrially-zoned properties, and so we should hang on to them. That was before you all, maybe a year ago, with a similar industrial conditional zoning where this was a big part of the discussion, is evaluating our need to retain the industrial land. Staff did consult with the EDC early on in this discussion, and they felt that the areas of the site that had steep slopes would not be appropriate for industrial development, but that's only certain areas of the site. So they did not really come forward with a clear statement on the other portions of the site. Aside from the industrial policy that I've mentioned with retaining industrially-zoned sites, the project does fall short on meeting other city goals and objectives with respect to including affordable units, maximizing residential density, and locating residential developments in an area that the staff feels is an appropriate place for residential development. We look at the compatibility of a proposal, and when we look at the site, and the first image that I showed, looking at Sardis Road with the other industrial and manufacturing uses nearby, and then as you zoom out from the site, going west on Sand Hill Road, there's the Coca-Cola bottling plant, Jacob Home Industrial Park, which I know is not called that, and other industrial uses in the vicinity. When you go out about two miles, you certainly do have residential uses, a tremendous amount of single-family neighborhoods, and there's residential amenities. There's library, schools in the area, the Buncombe County Sports Park. So there's certainly residential amenities within a couple of miles. It's just the location of this site, there's not any sidewalk on Sardis Road, there's no transit in this part of town. So our concern from the staff perspective is if you're locating 356, or in our parcel, 108 residential units, that it's not, it's not really a residential neighborhood. There's nowhere, there's no way to walk to these residential amenities that are outside of the location, the immediate area. And just even in the immediate area of Sardis Road, there's not a grocery store. It's just when we're looking at a compatibility where we want to put a couple hundred new or transplanted residents into this location, we want them to feel like they are in a residential neighborhood. And when we look at this site, it speaks of an industrial site that's not, from the staff's perspective, well-suited for that neighborhood kind of feel. Because the applicant did contend at the Planning and Zoning Commission that the site was, is well-suited for industrial uses, staff did an analysis of other industrial sites similar to what we did, the staff did after the previous conditional zoning requests. We looked at over 50 sites throughout the city in Buncombe County and found many active, successful, excuse me, industrial uses and manufacturing operations. In West Side Commerce Park off Emma Hazel Mill Road, Vista Industrial Park off of 191, Sweeten Creek Industrial Park, a lot of those sites have very small parcels and similar access, two-lane roads. Especially, I was very surprised to see West Side Commerce Park up off of Emma and Hazel Mill Road. I mean, that is not a very easy place to get to, but it's a very successful, thriving industrial park. When we did this analysis of 50 sites, we found that the average parcel size was five acres. This site is 11.8 acres, so we felt like even with the challenges of the stream buffer and taking out those areas, or the small pockets that do have a steeper slope, that it's still suitable in terms of size and access for an industrial use, given those others that are throughout the city. So ultimately, because the project does not comply with the strategic goals of the city on losing industrial land, and because then the offside is that we're not, they're not complying with those city's policies on affordability, maximizing residential density, the staff could not recommend approval of this conditional zoning request. Should council wish to support the application, something that we've done is drawn up a list of suggested conditions, and that was your Exhibit B1. The majority of the conditions that are in that list are just statements about the project, 108 residential units, this many parking spaces, the open space as proposed on the site plan. The bulk of the comments are unresolved conditions from the Technical Review Committee that are just revisions that need to be made on the plan, and all of those were agreeable to the applicant. There were four conditions on that list that we gave you that the applicant has not, to my knowledge, agreed to, and that these are presented to council as sort of a suggestion, a talking point, a place to start, to see what the staff thinks. If you would like to approve this project, here's what we think would make it get closer to the city's goals and objectives, and that's number two, three, four, and M in Exhibit B1. The first, and these all, the first three came directly from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they were statements that the applicant made to the Planning and Zoning Commission on different aspects that they'd like to put into the project, but they were unwilling to commit to them. So the first one was workforce rents, and the applicant stated that all of the units would be at the city's workforce maximum or lower, but when we asked them to commit to that, they would not do that at this time. They also talked a lot about accessible units. Being that this site is adjacent to the Industries for the Blind, a lot of the conversation, the presentation made by the applicant was that they were planning to incorporate specific units into the development that were for visually impaired residents and that could work at the Industries for the Blind next door. And the planning staff thought that was a fantastic idea and a really a great benefit. So we asked them to say how many they would dedicate, and so we could put that into the conditional zoning, and they were unwilling to commit to a number of, a specific number of units. So the staff has just offered 20 as a jumping off point. But we think that is a great idea, and it really makes for a fantastic aspect to the project if should council want to approve it. The third was that the applicant indicated at the Planning and Zoning Commission that they wanted to then put a walking path from the residence, from the development to the Industries for the Blind site so that the folks could get back and forth to work. So staff recommended that that be an accessible walking trail, given that they were specifically for the visually impaired residents. And the applicant has agreed that they will provide a walking path, but they will not commit to making it an accessible walking path. So that's just a suggestion from the staff that we would like to see that be the case. The last comment is more of a technical standard. Typically, with this number of units, the city would require two points of access. And as I mentioned, there's only one in, and that's Graymont Lane. And so in lieu of providing two points of egress, which is typical, because, and this is sort of the whole, it gets complicated with the portion being in the city and the portion being within the county, because it's only 108 units, that would not trigger two access points. The overall project would trigger two access points, but since we're only reviewing the city portion, we're not sure that we could require that they do this additional sprinkling. But the fire department has recommended that the safest bet, when you've only got the one access point, is to do the NFPA 13 sprinkler standard. But again, since it's not technically required, when you're only looking at the city's portion with the 108 units, that's just a suggestion from the city staff to you all to make that requirement, just to make it completely sprinkled. And another addition to that was that although the county's portion, you know, is not under your review, the city contracts with the county to provide the fire protection in this area. So essentially, the city, you know, from the fire protection standpoint, they are all the city's units to protect. So it's, that was the fourth recommendation. And that concludes my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Other questions? Very thorough, then. All right, if there aren't any questions, we do need to hear from the applicant. And Mr. Lou Bissett is here to do that.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you turn on the clock, I just wanted to say how happy I am about the Rattip funding. When I left office in 1990, I thought, well, the next, the next big area for the city is gonna be the river, and we're gonna get some money, and we're gonna make it more accessible, and it's gonna be fantastic. Well, it's taken 25 years, but you've done it, and I think Gary and Kathy, I know, deserve a lot of credit for that. So I just wanted to, wanted to thank you. My name is Lou Bissett, and I represent the developer of the proposed Graymont Apartment Complex. I've also had a longstanding volunteer relationship with Industries for the Blind, both as chairman of their local board and as a member of the parent board in Winston-Salem. So I'm very familiar with their unique situation and their need to be in a position to market their excess property. As you know, I have the utmost respect for the city's planning staff and for Jessica. However, in this instant, I disagree with their conclusions and with their recommendations to you on this project. Therefore, I want to take a little time to give you the reasons we believe the Graymont Project should be approved. I know, you know, I remember on council, you'd get some ideas about some of these projects ahead of time, but I hope you will all keep an open mind for what's gonna be presented to you tonight, because I think it'll, it'll be an eye-opener in many ways. As indicated, Buncombe County has just approved the construction of 248 Graymont units on the approximately 30 acres in the county zoning jurisdiction. So as Jessica said, we are asking you for approval to construct 108 units on 11.77 acres of adjacent land in the City of Asheville zoning jurisdiction. The estimated investment in the city by the developer will be approximately $10 million for their 108 units. This will be, the whole thing will be a single multifamily apartment complex, providing approximately 356 quality apartment units to the people of our community. And as you know, and as has been said, the need for multifamily housing in Asheville and Buncombe County is great. I remember when I was here last winter talking about another project, there was a mere 4% vacancy rate in multifamily units in our community, and we have some of the highest rental rates in the state of North Carolina. Why is this? It's because we have too much demand and too little supply. The construction of quality multifamily apartment complexes like Graymont will put downward pressure on rental rates throughout our community. So if you want to make housing more affordable, you should approve housing alternatives like Graymont. The Sardis Road corridor, which is up here, as you can see, is primarily rural in nature, but is becoming one of the most rapidly growing areas in our community. And you can see from Asheville Outlets on this end to the AB Tech Inc. campus on the other end. And all, there's been a lot of talk about it's an industrial area. Well, all of this land here is basically single-family residential. There's all kinds of residential around Biltmore Lake. There are two new schools going in across from this site. There's the Buncombe County Sports Complex that is nearby, and of course, the Asheville Outlets, which is gonna employ some 1,500 people who are gonna need places to live. As you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission recently approved the Graymont Project, and their recommendation is before you today. In that hearing, and I thought this was important, Commissioner Jim Edmonds stated that this proposed apartment complex was in his Inca Canler neighborhood. He further stated that Inca Canler has a dearth of apartment residences, and if someone needs rental housing in Inca Canler, about the only option is a mobile home. Jim stated emphatically that we need this type of housing alternative in his community. The next issue I'd like to discuss is the need to rezone this property from industrial to RM. And you know, industrial actually has a residential component, so you need to keep that in mind. We would submit to you, and this is the property, that this property is not suited for an industrial zoning designation. If you look at the property, you can see that out of the 11.77 acres in the proposal, only 5.5 acres up at the top are suitable for construction. So you can see that 1.79 acres are under the power lines, and the other 3.16 acres are designated as wetlands and will not be touched in this project. And even this 505-acre, this 5.5-acre building site has severe slope issues. And I think you can see that from here, if I can read it. You'll note the yellow is from 10 to 20% slope, and the orange is 20 to 30% slope, and the green is 0 to 10% slope. So you can, you can see the slope issues, and so even for this low-density residential development, extensive grading and retaining wall construction will be required. Now, Ben Teague, back in March, when we started talking to the city about this, sent a letter and said, sent a letter to Sam Powers and said, "Given the land in question, it'd be an unlikely industrial expansion opportunity, and I would suggest the council vote affirmatively for the zoning change." Well, I knew that'd been a long time, so I called Ben today. He called me back. He was in Disney World with his family, and he said, number one, he said, "I'd like for you to tell the council how much I appreciate their interest in retaining industrial property in the City of Asheville. He does, and I do." But he said, "You can also tell them that this is a terrible piece of property." He said, "It is totally non-competitive, and I still fully endorse the change of zoning." And then a little bit later, he sent me a text that said, "We actually don't even market that site, as its grade would be low and ultimately very uncompetitive for our clients." So, I mean, this is the Vice President of Economic Development for the Chamber of Commerce, whose main drive at this point is finding industrial property for clients. At the commission hearing last, a couple of weeks ago, Commission Chairman Jeremy Goldstein stated, and I'm gonna quote, he said, "That as a commercial realtor, I don't see getting any economic benefit from the site for a very long time if it stays industrial. I would see that the city would benefit from the development by gaining the apartments plus needed tax revenues." So that's two pretty, pretty good sources of how you look at an industrial piece of property. But I do want you to know that I believe very strongly in your goal of retaining industrial sites, and I believe it's very important for actually usable industrial acreage. But we do not really believe that, you know, that this is usable, and what I think you would be in fact doing by not approving this, is that the Industries for the Blind would be, would keep this property for a long, long time and not be able to sell it and receive the money they need to do the things they want to do. In the audience tonight, there are a number of individuals from Industries for the Blind, Randy Buckner, Asheville Operations Manager, Charlie Pine, Chairman of the Local Advisory Board, Kendra Turner, a member of the Local Advisory Board, and a number of employees of Industries for the Blind. All of these people are here tonight in support of this project, and Randy Buckner is prepared at the appropriate time to make a presentation as to why this apartment complex would greatly benefit Industries for the Blind and its employees. If Graymont is allowed to go forward, it would benefit Industries for the Blind in two major ways. First, they'll be able to sell this unusable portion of property for a significant amount of money to be used to repay debt and provide additional on-site amenities for its employees. Also, it is my understanding, and Randy will give you more details, that there are at least 20 Industries for the Blind employees who have indicated an interest in renting units in the Graymont Apartments. Discussions have taken place now for many months between the developer and IFB about upfits which would be appropriate for blind and visually impaired tenants. In addition, the two parties have agreed to an acceptable walking trail from the Graymont property, not just to the property line, but the developer has agreed to build it all the way to the plant. Finally, there's been a lot of discussion with the city staff related to the affordability of these units. First of all, let me say that this apartment complex will be a quality, multifamily residential development. development designed for working-class people and families in our community. Although the units are beautifully constructed of brick and provide numerous amenities, the rental rates are planned to be reasonable and affordable for a broad range of our citizens. The information that I have from the city indicates that under the workforce housing standards, that can't be.
Yeah, I've seen close. Go ahead.
Okay, let me, I'll try to move it up. Here is, here is the graph. And I wrote this out because the maximum affordable rent under your standards for workforce housing for a one-bedroom unit is $1,267. A two-bedroom is $1,418, and a three-bedroom unit is $1,563. Although my client cannot commit to dedicated rental rates due to a number of issues, including financing, he has, he has given us rates that, he's saying that if he opened this development tomorrow, the leasing rates would start as follows. One bedroom, and I think that's the current, he's calling that his current market rate. One bedroom would be $846, two bedrooms $923, and three bedrooms $1,409. And as you can see, all of those rates are well below your maximum workforce housing. But you know, we're talking about a project that won't even come online for two years. And he's just not prepared to do that. But he, he will deliver a quality-pleasing housing at a rate which we believe will be affordable for our citizens, and he's not requesting any taxpayer incentives from the city. So when you get to the, and I'll run through this quickly, the seven standards that you use when evaluating one of these projects, and you've got them there, I'm sure, I would say, and if the staff has a problem with it, they can, they can object, but there are really only two of those standards that they question our project meeting. And that's four, that the proposed use or development of the land will be in harmony with the scale, bulk, coverage, density, and character of the area and neighborhood. We believe that it meets this standard. Because although there are industrial uses in the area, there are also substantial residential, retail, schools, colleges, and sports, sports facilities. And I'm certainly no urban planner, but I believe that housing opportunities should be available to people in all areas of our community, in particular in it, in areas that need residential housing to support uses, such as these industry schools and retail developments. The second, the second issue that we have with, that the staff has with us is the, is the standard that the proposed use or development of the land will generally conform to the comprehensive plan, smart growth policy, sustainable economic development strategic plan, and other official plans adopted by the city. Now, Jessica mentioned that, you know, our density is only nine units per acre. Normally, when I'm up here, I'm trying to get our density down because there are people objecting to how density, density is. Here, I'm trying to get it up. But if you look at your smart growth plan, it gives a range, and I believe that range is from eight to 16. So we believe that, that we meet those issues. And if you, if you bring in 350 units along with everything else that's going out there, you're going to get pedestrian and bike access facilities. You're going to get public transportation that Industries for the Blind has been requesting for, for many, many years. So we would ask you to say yes to this project, which we think means saying yes to lower rental rates. It means saying yes to Industries for the Blind and its employees. And in the end, it means saying yes to the city. He's going to get a $10 million base for taxes. We've got with us tonight Patrick Bradshaw and Jess Gardner from Civil Design Concepts, Dennis Burton from CIP. And as I indicated, we've got a number of individuals from Industries for the Blind who would like to be heard on this matter. So turn this over to Patrick very quickly. He's got a few comments related to the conditions. And we're all here available for questions, and I appreciate you allowing me to run over a little bit. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Manheimer and council members. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. And as Lou indicated, I'll be brief, as I know our, our time is waning at best. Again, I think the importance to note is, as we talk about the criticalness of this piece of property as industrially zoned versus industrially suitable, the five and a half acres that we referenced specifically, it requires about 30 feet of retaining wall in one variety or another to even get that five acre suitable. And I know it seems to be a reasonable question, one might beg, well, if it's such a poor piece of property, why does it make sense for even the developer to undertake this piece? And I think that the answer to that question would be simply this. Back in around 2008, the developer who has, has owned since that time the adjoining county piece of property had about 350 units, more or less permitted on that parcel. That density has been spread over these two parcels. Like I say, in the absence of them owning an adjacent piece, again, I don't think this, this particular parcel is in play. So I would encourage you, just as you consider, you know, your policy from the Sustainable Economic Development Strategic Plan, while this property is industrially zoned, I would argue from an engineering perspective, time and again, that it is not industrially suitable. And then the other point to make specific is with regard to the sprinkler system, the item M that Ms. Bernstein referenced. Specifically, NFPA 13R speaks to residential units, which apartment complexes clearly fall within the confines of that by fire code. All the occupied spaces are sprinkled. The primary difference between these is 13 and 13R kind of draw a line between life safety. Both of them are, are on an equal footing from a life safety perspective. NFPA 13, as you'll hear it referenced, speaks to property coverage, if you will. You end up sprinkling unoccupied spaces, i.e. attics and things like that. I think the developer will tell you based on other projects that they have, 13R is very much the norm, if not the exclusive. With an all-brick, almost all-brick exterior, I think we're north of 95% of brick on the exterior. There's just a, a real need. All this speaking to, there's a true dollar sign associated if, if we were to impose an NFPA 13, as has been discussed. And again, appreciate your time, and I'd be glad to answer any specifics around the site.
Okay, and we were just getting situated here on the process. So we've heard from the presentation and we've heard from the applicant, which was permitted 10 minutes. So officially, we've opened the public hearing and you have provided our first public comment. And I'm going to continue to open it up to anyone else to provide public comment, then we'll circle back to council and see if there are questions.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So with that, is there anyone wishing to provide? Wait, are you, are you going to further clarify? Okay, we're, we're going to, yes, sir. And so for this portion of the hearing, each speaker is entitled to three minutes unless they're speaking on behalf of a group and have three people who will raise their hand and yield their time to the speaker. The speaker then can have 10 minutes. And if you begin by stating your name.
I'm Randy Buckner, Director of Operations at Industries for Blind here in Asheville. And I would like to have 10 minutes to speak, and I have three people that I'm speaking on behalf of that can raise their hands.
Okay. And just know if you do raise your hand and yield your time, that means you, you're giving up your opportunity to speak tonight. Okay, thank you.
Well, first of all, I'd like to introduce the folks that's with me from Industries for Blind. If you'd all raise your hand of all the employees and staff that's here for Industries for the Blind. And also, we have, as Lou mentioned, a couple of our board members with us. Charlie Pine, our Board Chairman, and Kendra Turner, who's a member of our advisory board locally. So welcome them. First of all, I want to give an overview of Industries for the Blind, just to tell you how important this is to, of a project to us. Our mission at Industries for Blind is to provide opportunities for people who are blind or visually impaired in need of training, employment, and services. We believe that all persons who are blind or visually impaired have the right to succeed in every area of life. We are a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization, and we have been in Asheville since 1938. So a very long time in Asheville. Started in downtown on Biltmore Avenue. We have over 120 employees at Industries for Blind. 75% of our work that's done is done by people that are legally or totally blind. 85% of those individuals were considered unemployable before coming to work for Industries for the Blind. In 2007, we moved from South French Broad Avenue in downtown Asheville to this property on Sardis Road. And the reason we, we moved is we needed to expand to continue offering employment growth and opportunities for visually impaired and blind people, job opportunities. And since we've moved, we've added at least 50 or more new jobs in our new facility. So it's, it's paying off. And gave us another 30,000 square feet. We were also, when, when we sold the downtown, we were able to sell the downtown property, and it helped us purchase the property on Sardis Road, but there was a buy-sell gap. And also, we spent a lot of money on remodeling the Sardis Road facility to make it suitable for our needs and, and blind people and make it safe and blind-friendly throughout the property. So there was a, so the sale of the property that's in question here would help us pay some of that buy-sell gap, as well as provide other amenities to our employees there at Industries for the Blind. But since we moved to Sardis Road, we had a capital campaign. We've added a hot meal cafeteria, the first time in over 70 years we've ever had that. So now our people have a hot breakfast, a hot lunch, even order a take-home meal if they choose. We also, during that campaign, added a Community Low Vision Center, which a lot of y'all may know about. And it's on Sardis Road now. And that serves the entire western North Carolina area and also points of other states and also the Asheville community. So providing a complete line of low-vision services for people in our community, which there's a great need for that service. We bought the new property and it came with 18 acres of land when we bought Sardis Road. Didn't need that much property, but that came with a package to get the facility out there. So we're retaining enough property to do any expansions we'd ever need for Industries for the Blind in the future and, you know, add on additional space as, as we need to grow our business and continue our mission of providing employment for visually impaired and blind. So we have that covered as far as the retaining space. And we, we do feel that the best use of this particular property that we own is for apartments or residential use. We, as Lou said, we already have 20 blind and visually impaired people that would be interested in relocating to these apartments if they were built. And, and so they're in support, in full support of the rezoning, of course. Living, you know, having these apartments and living in the apartments would improve the quality of lives for our people at Industries for the Blind. It would save them on a lot of transportation costs and commute time to work. Some of them commute over an hour on a bus or a van to get to work, and now they would be conveniently relocated there, and we would provide transportation up and down, up and down the mountain there. So, so that's, you know, it's, it's going to really improve and impact their life in a positive way. And also, as Lou mentioned, the, the developer has agreed to, to make a blind-friendly walking path from the apartments to IFB, and that path would not even cross traffic, which is a great thing. It would be no, no traffic crossings at all. Then also, they've agreed to work with their low-vision department there at Industries for the Blind on making the units that visually impaired access, you know, more blind-friendly. And that's a simple thing. It doesn't take a remodeling of a unit, just simple little devices that we have available in our low-vision store that, that can outfit a range or a microwave or, you know, a telephone or anything that would make it blind-friendly, even a talking thermostat. We have those available. So, so we have all that equipment through our Community Low Vision Center. So IFB would, we'd like to ask you to rezone this property for residential use and to assist us. I think it would be a win situation for everyone. So thank you for your time, and appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to the council and as to why we should make this resident, this zoning change. My name is Charles Pine. I am the Chairman of the Board of the Local Advisory Board, and I was also on the parent board in Winston-Salem. One of the things we did a couple of years ago is we had a capital campaign. It was the first one in 75 years, the only one that has ever been done. We had a goal. We did fall short a little bit of our goal, but we got the biggest and most important things, such as the cafeteria and things of that nature. We feel like that being able to provide jobs for 120 people plus who are now gainfully employed and can, can actually have a life just like everybody else. So we have none, we, one of the couple of things we did not get done was the walking trail, the exercise room, the picnic pavilion. And those are the things that we'd like to finish because it's as important to them. They've asked for it. It's not what we want for them, it's what they've asked to have. So we feel like to sell this land, it will allow us the opportunity to give them what they would, what they need. If we don't sell the land, we can't use it for anything. It's, it's, it's dead. It's just nothing. It means nothing, except the few acres that we maintain to expand the business. Industries for the Blind provides a lot of jobs, a lot of opportunities, and in the city of Asheville, it's an economic contributor. $35 million a year minimum. I mean, a lot of people don't realize that. These people have jobs. They are able to do what they want to do. The other things that we were able to do was to do the mission IFB Low Vision Center. Plus, we have the retail store where they can buy, you and I, we look at a watch. They get a talking watch. You and I look at a medicine bottle. They get a pin that they scan, and it tells them what the medicine is and how much they should take. And we sell these things. We sell them on a sliding scale. Believe me, if they want them, they're going to get them. We have other programs going on. We have, the city is kind enough to provide computers for the students during the time they're at school. And they do just all their homework, they do all the work in school on that. But when they leave, they don't have it. They can't take it with them. We provide these computers free of charge to these children. We have adult training courses for computers. The blind people can use computers. I appreciate the time. I hope you will consider re-changing, changing the zone.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, council and staff. Thank you. I'm Kendra Penland. To clear up some of the confusion, that show's changed yesterday, so I'm still getting used to it, too. So as Charles and Randy both mentioned, I am a member of the advisory board here in the Asheville area for Industries for the Blind. And a lot of what's been said, I don't need to repeat, but I do want to stress that Industries for the Blind serves a really critical purpose. And without it, there are some folks who wouldn't have opportunities to have the quality of life that being gainfully employed allows them. So if you would just consider what us being able to have the sale of this property means, which requires a rezoning, allows Industry for the Blind to do. From an operational capacity, it allows us to expand operations, retain existing employees, to add new employees, new employment opportunities. So it's about quality of life, and it's about another city council strategic goal, which is helping folks achieve economic mobility. So thanks again, and appreciate your consideration.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much, City Council, IFB, Randy, all my employees, and I am one of them, and I'm proud of it. My name is Lucille Mahoney. I'm originally from the great state of Massachusetts. Now, my new home is in wonderful Asheville, North Carolina. of Massachusetts. Now, my new home is in wonderful Asheville, North Carolina. It's just wonderful to get up in the morning and go to a job. I've met a lot of nice friends here. I've met a lot of nice people that I truly am fond of. And I'm very proud to be an employee at IFB. And I love all my employees, my friends, the staff. And it's just a wonderful organization to work for and with. Please, please, please consider rezoning the wonderful property and the wonderful building, the marvelous building that will be going up. Because everyone will benefit. It will be convenient for everyone who works at IFB. And it will be a wonderful living situation for everyone who will be living in the Greymont Apartments. From the bottom of our hearts, we want this to be from all of us at IFB. And when new people come to be employed at IFB and live in this building, they can come from the local area, from across the country. And we have an employee here from a country in the world who is employed now and around the world. I thank all of you. God bless you. And I mean it, and we all mean it, from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. And I'm proud to be an employee of IFB in Asheville. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Brother Christopher, City Council, Madam Mayor, I know the importance of keeping industrial property because without jobs, who can live in the city? The only concern I had was what your staff had. The fact that they were talking about, well, we can do this, we can do that, and not making it, you know, not committing to what they were talking about. That does bother me. You know, you can, I can tell you how great the car is, but if I don't commit to it, you're stuck. I would only recommend one thing. Since IFB is planning to stay there for a long time, is to make one of the conditions that whatever amount of apartments, whether it be 20, 40, or whatever, be locked in. Meaning that if, say, one of the people working for IFB were to pass away or move out of town, they just can't turn around and rent that apartment to someone else. That those apartments be locked into IFB. And anyone who moves out, an IFB employee must be moved in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay? I have closed the public hearing. Are there questions from council? Yes.
Is it Mr. Bradley, the site manager?
I'm sorry.
A couple of questions for you, if you don't mind, if you could come back forward. Thank you.
Yeah, Director of Industries for the Blind.
I'm sorry. You've said that you've arranged or got an agreement with the developer for a suitable walking trail between the plant and these units. And I take it that you can faithfully say to your employees that that has worked out, that they can count on that for years to come?
That's correct.
Okay. So I'll say that that can be managed between these parties, that the city perhaps doesn't need to intervene to assure that. Regarding the units that are accessible and suitable for blind and sight-impaired people, similarly, can you say to your employees that you have an arrangement that there are a significant number of units, 20, I think is the word you used, or someone used, that are going to be there for the long haul and that you've arranged with the developer that those units will be in place?
Yes. Well, there's kind of a misperception as far as like making an apartment blind-friendly. All of the individuals that's here today, they live in just a regular apartment at Meadows or the ones out along Shoals Road they live at. And they're paying these type of rates as well now because they're competitively employed. So, you know, you can go into any apartment, what you need to make it blind-friendly is maybe some bump dots put on the oven to show where off is, and the microwave, some of its own braille dots, you know, and there's techniques they use in refrigerators. But we provide all that service through Community Low Vision Service, independent living skills training. And so, one thing that we've asked the developer is, you know, another thing, just a little paint can make a difference of contrast colors. So the things they can do in these particular units, you know, they could rent, if a blind person moved out, sighted person moved in, you know, there wouldn't be any change needed except maybe moving some bump dots and some indicators on the units. If they happen to, if we happen to go in and install a talking thermometer, of course, the sighted person could take advantage of that, whether they were occupied by a sighted person or a blind person. So it's not like they, and I would invite, you know, the mayor and city council to come out and tour Industries for the Blind. And you'll see the remarkable work they're doing. Have totally blind individuals running sewing machines, doing assembly work, and all sorts of industrial-type work. And you'll see that, hey, these people can be independent with the proper training in mobility, or tactile gauges or different things. So not a lot of really upfit in their changing. And they're not getting at where they're at now. So that's why Lucille said, you know, she'd love to move here or live there. Her and Bob are paying those rates now at Meadows. And also, they're paying a tremendous amount of transportation cost. So they would receive a large savings in their monthly household budget if this, these apartments were here, even at those market rates.
And the, you know, part of that question that I wanted to make sure I got here was, do you have an agreement with the developer that there will be a preference for your employees for these units? That there will be, that it won't be a matter of first come, first served, or whoever's willing to pay the highest rent? That you feel that you have an arrangement so a number of your employees will be able to live here?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's not, I don't think that's something that even we can force, you know, regularly. So one final question. The, I believe the Director of the Economic Development Coalition indicates that somehow in this arrangement that there is approximately six acres so that the IFB plant can expand beyond its current size. Is that, is there an arrangement for that either onto this property or onto property that IFB owns?
Well, the current, you know, lot we're on is seven acres. And the diagram, you can see there's a field behind the facility. There's a large parking lot area. And there's an extended parking lot area. So we have, you know, room to expand, you know, 20, 30,000 square feet if we needed to. And following, yeah, so following after, so we have an expansion area in this area here.
Great. I'm sorry, that, y'all showed that earlier, and I'm sorry I overlooked that.
Yeah. So we, you know, we, and the thing is with the population in Asheville, the visually impaired, you know, population, the total population, we're basing this off of sizes like Winston-Salem, you know, as large as they are, they just have 100,000 square feet. We currently have 23,000 or 73,000 square feet. So we've kind of reserved that we could expand 100,000 square feet if we needed to. And we could cover an area as big as, you know, you know, so that would kind of handle our future needs. And that's kind of what we base it off of. You're looking at a large area like Winston-Salem, Greensboro, you know, the triad type area. And, you know, so Asheville, I think, would, you know, that expansion would take care of any future long-term needs. And remember, we've been in Asheville since 1938 already and expanded from 42,000 to 73. You know, it's a long time, but it's providing great services.
Well, I appreciate your commitment. I mean, it's, if you weren't here doing it, there would be a lot of people that would not have opportunity, as Ms. Penland said. And the whole community appreciates the commitments you guys have made. Well, those are my questions. I'd like to offer a couple of comments and a motion, Mayor. Is that appropriate?
I'm just releasing our...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we're done. Thank you. I appreciate it. Those were tough questions. I appreciate you responding. I find myself particularly in a really difficult place in this decision. I sit on the Economic Development Coalition Board last Thursday, five days ago. We had a meeting. And there was a very high level of urgency stressed by the Director, Ben Teague, who wrote a letter supporting this rezoning, and the Director of the Chamber indicating that, that over the next five years, we, that this community, not just the city, but the county, the broader community, does not have industrial sites sufficient to entertain the kind of growth in capital investment and jobs that we've had over the past five years. It was a, it was a higher level of urgency expressed by those leaders than I've witnessed, at least. And looking back, our land use plan, our comprehensive land use plan that was adopted perhaps 15 years ago or so, stressed it the same way. That the consultant that helped us with that plan said, of all the communities we have ever, ever worked for, Asheville-Bunkham has the greatest deficiency of industrial sites and industrial zone land of anybody they worked for. Now, this is, this is a crisis for the whole community. And affordable housing is important, but jobs are important. Our average wage in this community is lower than all the other major cities in the state, significantly lower than some. And it's our greatest economic development challenge is to get well-paying jobs like I think are provided at IFB and other industrial employers that we're lucky to have here. But we have to provide sites for companies to employ people. We also have to provide the affordable housing. As an elected official, you know, we come into, as elected officials, we come into office, we've got this existing set of properties that are zoned industrial. And from the standpoint of our duty, that is the inventory that we are sort of charged to defend. And I feel a great duty here to make sure we're, we're looking out for industrial sites and future jobs. On the other hand, we have the Director of the Economic Development Coalition, the person, as Mr. Bisip points out, has the highest duty of anybody in this community to make sure these sites are developed and looked after, saying, we don't need this one. It is not suitable for industrial development. And I understand how properties can be miszoned. We're talking now about an effort to sort of straighten out and reconcile miszoned properties across the community for different uses. And we really have got to get on with that, include this industrial thing consideration in there. We, at the Economic Development Coalition meeting last Thursday, the staff there and the board seemed to commit to a study, to an effort, an urgent effort over the coming months, to establish what the inventory of industrial sites is and reach, reach and look deeper and broader than we ever have in the past to understand what the potential sites are. They stressed in that meeting that local government needs to be a bold, strong, courageous partner in doing that. And I take that duty seriously. And it's why I'm, I've struggled here tonight with this decision. I, the thing I would stress most is that if you're a resident of this county, if you're a citizen of this community, you should demand that the elected officials, the civic leaders that sit on boards like the Economic Development Coalition Board, work responsibly and dutifully to get our arms around better than we have this problem of lack of industrial sites. I am, I'm going to support this rezoning tonight. I'll make a motion here in a second. And I do it with some reluctance, I have to say, because I care greatly about this, this matter of industrial sites being maintained and defended here. But based on the input of our Economic Development Coalition Director, that this site is not suitable and that we can work in the future to understand where those sites are, I'll work hard as a member of this council to reorganize our zoning and our land use planning to better situate ourselves to know where those sites are and defend them in the future. But having said that, I move to approve the conditional zoning request for Greymont Village Apartments on Sardis Road from commercial, industrial, and industrial to residential multifamily, high-density CZ based on the site plan and conditions agreed upon by the applicant and outlined in Exhibit B1, and find that the request is reasonable in the public interest and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following ways. The project adds needed residential rental units to the city. The project preserves sensitive environmental area through the stream buffer. The project will dedicate units at a workforce rent. The project will include specific units for vis... I'm sorry. Assuming conditions are agreed on, I got ahead of myself.
Maybe we should have a look at the conditions.
Yeah. Let me hold my motion for a second. And I know others on council want to discuss the conditions, as Ms. Councilman Smith just said.
Can I just interrupt for one second? I want to make sure that it's on the record by numbers, since we've got some conditions that are agreed to and some aren't, that Mr. Bisip perhaps can let us know specifically, based on Exhibit B1, which of those conditions that the applicant has agreed to? And there's some in red, so that ought to help you, I guess, a little bit.
Yes. The conditions that we have not agreed to are 2, 3, 4, and 11M.
Which, there's all kinds of different numbers on this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Except that B1...
B1. So not, not the numbers used in the proposed motion?
No, it's sorted near the end.
What page of the PDF? Page 26.
And one other thing, Mr. Bisip, there's a site plan that's attached that was submitted with the, and we're, that is also part of your agreement, is that that, the development will be in accordance with that site plan?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you restate which ones have not been agreed to? I see why that's faster than the...
Yes, B1, 2, number 2, number 3, number 4, and 11M. And let me just say, you know, we're dedicated to market rents. And as you can see from that slide, our market rents are well below your workforce maximum rents. So we think we'll always be there, but we're not agreeable to dedicating that in some, for 10 years or some period of time. But that, the market, you know, if you look at the market that was up there, your workforce housing rents, some of these things, if you were, I mean, if you're telling a developer that you can be under these workforce housing rents, look how much, look, look how high they are. We are saying, if we open this, this complex tomorrow, we'd be charging the orange rate, which are well below your workforce maximums. And even on the one bedroom and the two bedrooms, they're almost at your affordable levels. So we think we're there and, but we are not willing to dedicate a certain number of units to something that we can't, don't know what'll happen with in five, 10 years. And we've got lenders. CIP is a big developer. They got big lenders and they've got stacks of regulations and restrictions. So, you know, we say we're workforce, and if we open tomorrow, we'd be so far below your workforce housing maximums, wouldn't be funny. Now, number three, the accessible units, we've agreed, we've been talking to IFB for a long time, we've agreed to make these units blind-friendly. We don't know what accessible means, and we're worried about that. But we've worked closely...
But we've worked closely with Randy and his office, we've worked closely with the employees out there, and these units will be blind-friendly units that they can utilize. So the, the problem we have there is, what does accessible mean? I mean, does that mean, you know, that you have to totally redo the whole unit, and, and so, we're, we're not willing to do that. The accessible walking path, there again, is, is just, we've, we've been, they've been over it with Randy, and, and looked at the work, walking path that they can construct, and I believe Randy will tell you, that the employees who live up there will be able to negotiate this pla, path. But we're concerned about the word accessible, because we don't know what that means in the context of the ADA. So that's, that's, that's our objections to those three. On the, on the, on the other one, you know-
Was it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
M, the one that says, single access road?
Yeah, now, as I told Shannon, I'm above my pay grade on sprinkler systems, but our client, who has hundreds of apartment complexes, tells me that they have never used NFPA-13, that it's NFPA-13R residential. And there was a big discussion last week with the Fire Marshal, and I'm told that the Fire Marshal agreed that there, there was no difference in life safety between these two standards. But the, the problem for us is that the, the NFPA-13 standard is so much more expensive than the, than the, the normal one that is used in apartment complexes and-
I'm a little confused about why that's a negotiation point. I mean, isn't there just a requirement? Is there, there's room for negotiation on this, or, I thought fire code issues were-
No, this is a-
That'll be a first for us.
This is a higher standard than, than the other apartment complexes that, that you grant.
So would the Fire Marshal sign off on your current plan?
I was like, whoever was in that meeting-
You want me to explain what the deal is? That, if it, oh, Shannon's much better than me. Oh, there you go.
It's, it's quite simply, it's, it's a situation we've not confronted before, with a large portion of the development not being in the city's jurisdiction. There's a question about whether or not the city can consider the portion of the property that is not in our jurisdiction.
And here we have the-
So, so the, there was some concern whether or not we could call it one development, or if we could, or if we needed to limit ourselves to just the portion of the property that is in the city limits. But of course, as you heard earlier, the city will be responsible for providing the Fire Protection Service in that area, so our preference would be to look at it. And, and it is a subject of some debate, whether or not we can or cannot. But leading up to this hearing, we didn't really have, you know, we had to kind of make a decision one way or the other. So from a technical standpoint, we were prepared to say it would not be required, because we would be limiting ourselves to the 108 units that are in the city's jurisdiction. However, looking larger, and in an effort to meet higher city goals, to provide adequate service in that area, we would require the system for, for the project as a whole through the conditional zoning. If, if 200 units were in the city's jurisdiction, there is no question it would be required. But because a large portion of the project is outside our jurisdiction, it was unclear.
Chief, you have anything to add to that?
Very, very well said. Apologize for taking a minute to get in here.
I'm amazed you're still here. That's good, good. Okay, so where were we? So we realized the suggested motion included conditions that we assumed were agreed to or didn't. So, please, Councilman Smith.
Really great to hear about the proposed lower rents that you're talking about for out there. I was doing a little back-of-the-envelope math up here and saw that that was at about 82% of median, that would be those rents that you said would be considered affordable. And that's real interesting, pretty decent rates for out there, even once you figure in transportation to job becomes something that might be within reach for a lot of folks. The unwillingness not to commit to those is real tricky. And we've, we've heard from a lot of builders up here, who are working with a lot of different banks, who have been able to commit to this sort of stuff. So it's a bit confusing to hear that someone can't. We just heard at the last meeting, a developer up here committing to, to certain rates. And I wonder if there might be an openness to committing to maybe that 82% of median, making it affordable to that, so it can move with the market? Or to, with the base rates that you've suggested here, being able to adjust those upwards, 3% per year? And also to, you know, to create some sort of commitment as, as a part of this, if we're going to lose this industrial land and, and be able to help the folks who most need it, I just, I would want us to have a, a commitment in place to be able to, to do that. I, I, I think that, that's the intention right now. But we do this, two years down the road, the world changes, and suddenly these places are 1267 a month for a one-bedroom, and the people at the Asheville Owl and Malls are going to be making $9 an hour and not, are not going to be able to afford to live there. So when we talk about 1,500 employees at the Asheville Owl and Malls making $18,000 a year, what's affordable to them is actually much less than what's here already, but it could be within reach with, with, you know, a roommate or something like that. So I, I'm just seeking some kind of firmer commitment.
I, I know, and I wish we could make it to you. But you know, you look at, they tell me that this, this difference between the 13R and the 13 represents about $750,000 in additional cost. So, you know, we, you've got to make these, you've got to make these units work from an economic point of view. And, you know, Mr. Burton's back here, who'd be glad to address it, but I, I don't think his, his owner is prepared to do that.
Understood.
I wish, I wish it was possible, but it's not.
I'm with CIP Construction, I'm the Land Development Manager, and I represent the, the owner here. And as far as the affordability, we've been looking at this project from year 2007, and mainly it was over on the county portion. And we saw an opportunity that we were having a great deal of topographic considerations, as well as retaining walls, even wetlands and streams. And so we saw this opportunity over at the Industries for the Blind, entered into discussions with them. And the developer, I can assure you, is, he started, he initiated the conversations about the land and how we could make the, the project work for the Industries for the Blind and work for us. And it's only a good business decision to help work with people that are, that are close by. And the, if, if somebody's going to the effort that these employees are to make it to the, to work every day, I wish everybody had that work ethic. But if everybody can make it, have that work ethic, then we know that they're going to be great residents of our community. And so that's why we want to work with the Industries for the Blind, that's why we, we initiated the discussions with the Industries for the Blind to make that happen. As far as the affordable housing, the way this thing was set up originally is that we cannot have any restrictions on the units. We cannot have any economic restrictions on the units, based on the way this project was put together initially. But the owner has agreed that if the city has an opportunity or knows of an affordable housing, or has an affordable housing issue, and wants to enter into discussions about partnering to build affordable housing on another site, we are receptive to those discussions and would like to enter into those discussions. But this, the way this project was put together is not for restrictions on, on the unit, economic description, restrictions on the units. Those market rates, we are a market rate developer, and those market rates are the current market rates that we have in this area. Also, on the NFPA-13 versus the NFPA-13R, I want to preface all this, that I'm the son of a firefighter. He's passed away in 2002, but I'm always concerned about public safety, and this is not a life safety issue. And in our discussions with our Marshal, Wayne Hamilton, that was in agreement, we had a meeting on last Thursday, I believe, the, the 4th. And we're all in agreement that this is not a life safety issue, it's a property, it becomes a property issue. The difference between the 13 and 13R system is the 13 system has a steel pipe system and also goes into the attic, requires the attic to be sprinkled. And its additional cost will raise the pro forma to, of this particular site, and it will be a deal killer. I'll be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
So just to wrap up my comments, I'm pretty torn about this. I mean, I always want to be able to kind of take people at their word, but we've been, we've been burned at this, at this table before. This is, I mean, this is not a transit-oriented development, and it is, it is sprawling without those commitments to the, the employees, as well as to, you know, what it sounds like y'all are wanting to do. I don't believe I'm going to be able to be supportive tonight. So my, my hope is that maybe we could kick this down the road and try to get to a better place, I don't know, but I don't know where y'all are.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna find out.
Yeah. Now, I've got a couple of problems with this. I, I think that the concern about loss of industrial, an industrial site is important. And although I, I take it as true that a couple of people who have some good ideas about industrial sites say that this is not a good one, land values change a lot as development goes forward. What is unbuildable in 1920 is suddenly buildable in 1970, and suddenly even, you know, worth a ton of money in 2014. So I don't think the argument about it not being a good site carries much water for me. If you can put up retaining walls and build a housing development, an apartment complex, you can put up retaining walls and build an industrial site. I'm troubled, as Councilman Smith is, about the lack of commitment to the, the cost of these things. I mean, I think one of the things we can do with the conditional zoning is to, is to get some good for the community. Things could change in two years, I agree, but we have other developers over and over again who are able to commit for 10 years to affordability, or to some framework for, for the cost that's going to go on. We have developers who can commit for 10 or 20 years to truly affordable housing. So I, I don't buy the argument that this can't be restructured. As far as the fire protection, it seems to me that the question there is the only one access, that's the defining problem there, because there's only one way in, the, the code wants more protection for the buildings, put another road in. That's going to cost less than $765,000, I think. So why not make another access? And then you don't need to have that fire protection. I don't know, that just crosses my mind as a builder. But as things stand, I can't support this.
Well, it seems to me, I mean, looking at these, that the developer is intending on doing the right thing. But without making a commitment, I just think it sets a pretty unfortunate precedent with changing zoning. It's like, well, just trust me, and then I think it, it puts us in a very difficult position in the future. So I'm not going to be able to support it.
I believe this development is the wrong location for this here. What we're going to do is if we put these apartments in this location here, in two years or four years, we're going to have residents demanding transit services, they're going to be danning sidewalks. We, we're going to have to fund those things, we're going to have to do those things. We're asking tonight, as Councilman, Councilwoman Whistler says, we're prepared to commit to transferring this, this property, rezoning it to, to, to allow for the residential development. For myself, I need a commitment in return from, from the developers, and I haven't heard that, so I cannot support it either.
Okay, we were, Kevin?
Not surprisingly, I am going to support it. I would hope that we would find enough votes here to make it happen, because that, the county's already approved the larger portion of this. This is some substantial housing at a rate that is below workforce housing. It puts it in an area of town that there isn't a lot of affordable housing, other than mobile homes. It's going to grow out there, and quite frankly, the, someone said a while ago that it did not lend itself to a neighborhood, perhaps, but I think that if you look back at industrial locations over a period of history, there were mill villages. There were a lot of places that had neighborhoods associated with industry. And I happen to think that this area will grow, there will be more, more residential components there, but for the moment, this will be one of the few things there. The IFB was a neighbor of ours on Patton Avenue for a number of years, and I got to know, in fact, even one of the employees there is a member of my Sunday School class, and it did great work. In fact, the Low Vision Center is incredible, and the, the work that is done for, for people with low vision or, or blind, without it, it would not be, this community would not be the community it is. And frankly, the funds that they're generating from a piece of land that they're not using, which will probably not sell, that, that little piece of, that five acres that's usable is probably, I guess, some industry could locate there, but I don't see it happening anytime in the immediate future. And Cecil, to your point, quite frankly, it will be worth something more someday. But right now, it's an opportunity for these folks to have something improved on the site. It will be an opportunity to, to finish some of the things that IFB wanted to do at the location. And I happen to believe Mr. Pine and those folks do a great job. And I think that part of the things that are said about this council and Asheville being hard to develop in is probably coming true here this evening. And I just, it's regrettable to see us get caught up in, you know, like, like Vice Mayor said, it, it causes him a great deal of difficulty, it does me too, in wanting to really break away from something we said, all of a sudden we want to do it these ways. But this one is one that's a little different in that there's an opportunity in hand, our neighbors next door, the county commissioners have already approved a large piece of industrial land to do the bulk of the project on. And what we're walking away from here, it's painful. Quite frankly, I, I can understand why people don't want to come in front of this council. And I've never said that in 11, going on 11 years of being here, I've never said that. But it bothers them, and I am going to support it.
Okay, it can, if you could, Ms. Kern, tell us, if this project is voted down, if this, if tonight, tell us what that would mean in terms of the, the process. I mean, would that be, would that be it? Could we reconsider it soon, or how would that, how would that work?
I think there's a year waiting period, one-year waiting period, under the UDO for, for the applicant to request again. Is there? It's substantially different. Is, there's no waiver provision for the council to, okay.
So a no vote tonight would result in, in no opportunity to revisit this unless there's substantial change for one year. And I, I, I think the applicants had an opportunity to hear the, the positions of council, and I'm, I'm concerned that we don't have an agreement, but that there are, there does seem like there's room for the opportunity to reach an agreement. And, and I would just invite the applicant to take a moment, consider whether or not to continue this, or we can move forward with the motion.
If we have one sec.
Yes.
Be great. Be great.
Well, and we-
It'd be a fine idea, 10 minutes.
We have a closed session, so it wasn't, but should we, you want to just recess? Yeah. Can we go into recess for just a moment?
I mean, if it's-
Yeah.
I think we need a break for just a moment.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we'll be, we'll be in recess for just a few moments.
We don't have a-
Yes, that didn't work.
Mr. Bissett, where we left off was whether or not you all would take the opportunity to ask to continue this to, to another date, so we might be able to work on some of these outstanding issues.
We are, we would be willing to try that. We, you know, we're not sure where we can go, but we're willing to try, and we would hope that the city would reciprocate. You know, I think this is a win-win, it could be a win-win for everybody, for industries, for the blind who needs to sell their backyard for the city, who would get $10 million of tax base, and for, for my client, who would be able to do the kind of quality development that he wants to do. I mean, he can, he can push it all over on the county line, but, but nobody wants to do that. So we're willing to really make an effort to see if we can, we can reach some agreement on the, in these areas.
Mr. Bissett, I'm grateful to you and to the developers for your willingness to take that step, and it's my hope that we can get to that good place, too.
Thank you, Councilman.
And with that, I'll make a motion to continue the consideration of the conditional zoning for Graymont Village Apartments to October 14th, 2014.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, anyone wishing to comment on the motion to continue this hearing. Not the public hearing court, though.
No, not the public hearing, just consideration of, of the, of the rezoning by the council.
My, my original motion with this, hereby withdrawn.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, we have two items under new business. The first is a resolution adopting the Riverside Drive Development Plan. And, but we're, first, we're going to allow for, Stephanie, maybe you come, you might want to come around. Boy, we're glad to see you.
Yeah.
Well-
This is going to be nice.
Can you talk while you're jumping up and down?
Yeah.
It's pretty timely.
Are there industrial sites included in this?
Yeah, I was going to say. Are you asking for any-
There's light industrial across the river.
Any rezoning.
Potentially later on.
I know.
Okay, you ready for this?
Ready.
Okay, so thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for taking time out tonight to listen to this item. I want to thank the consultants and everyone in the community that worked on the Riverside Drive Development Plan, and everyone in the community who's worked on riverfront redevelopment initiatives that have helped us get to this place over the past 30 years. What you're considering tonight is an action item to adopt, or not adopt, the Riverside Drive Development Plan. And I just want to get people acclimated to the area. You are really looking at the, at, you're reflecting on, what is the future going to be like for where the River Arts District meets the riverfront? This is really the heart or the urban core of Asheville's riverfront. And so, for folks at home, this is the New Belgium Brewing Site here on the west in West Asheville. This is connecting us to downtown. This is the Captain Bowen Bridge. This is the West Asheville Riverlink Bridge. And all of the parcels that are outlined in red are 10 acres of city-owned property in the heart of that River Arts District. So the million-dollar question is, what are you going to do with that property? And probably another important question for you to think about is, knowing that you can't keep the future stable, you don't know what the price of steel is going to be, who your development partners might be, that kind of thing, what are the guiding principles that you can think about and maybe adopt that the community recommended, so that anything you decide to do in the future to redevelop this area kind of has a little bit of success insured of it? And those are the questions. Those two questions are what the community and the consultants thought about when they took a look at this area. And I'm going to bring up one of the consultants a little bit later, but first, I want to dive down and talk about the content of the plan. So, there are guiding principles in the plan, thankfully, and they can be summarized as following. Think about the river when you do development. Be sustainable and balanced in your development choices. Realize the arts and culture character and link to the rest of Asheville. Provide opportunities for public and private views. Think mixed use. And think 24/7 environment. Few highlights about how they are suggesting through recommendations that you can realize some of those guiding principles in the area. They've basically broken up your redevelopment opportunities into three main focus areas. One is the renovation of a historic building at 14 Riverside Drive. Two is the redevelopment of all the open space along the riverfront, and the third is the consideration of new construction and new development on the east side of the future RadTip. So let's start with 14 Riverside Drive. There it is, that's the former PSNC office building that Councilman Davis's dad used to work at. We are really excited to have worked with a lot of community partners to clean this building up in the past, and the consultants were excited to get inside and do a lot of technical work, structural engineering, taking a look at the capacity for this building to serve the community, and we actually ended up getting some construction drawings out of them as well. But what might be more interesting for the people at home is what is this building going to be used for? And so, another part of that team went out and did a big consensus building process with the River Arts District community, and it was pretty clear that what folks wanted to see is a portal into the River Arts District, a place that you could land by any means of transportation, and that you could find out what is going on and how to tap into the breadth of activities in the district. Maybe you need to use the public restroom. They also said that it was important that the city not run this building and work with instead a not-for-private or private partner to ensure that there is continual vibrant use of this building, both inside and out. Second focus area, open space along the riverfront. So a lot of what the consultants did with this was just reaffirm some of the legacy of planning that we've already had in this area, running from the Wilma Dykman Riverfront Master Plan, the Between the Bridges Initiative, and also the Parks and Recreation and Culture Arts and Greenways Master Plan. So they created a series of different rooms that support some of the uses, and most of them are pretty passive uses that celebrate the natural riparian nature of this area. And they also did something that I think is kind of special, and I want to highlight, they take a look at this area here, and what you're looking at is the area south of Gene Webb Park, just north of 14 Riverside Drive. Right over here is the 13 Bones Pedestrian Bridge that the Design Center built for the city last year, and you'll note that there is a creek that runs along this area. It's pretty silted up, it's pretty damaged, it's pretty urban, it's stormwater runoff that comes from the northern side of downtown. And the folks that were in our team are pretty smart, and they had worked on and seen a lot of examples of cool constructed wetlands in the past, and they said, what if we did something like that in that area right there? And so that's what you come up with. And what you end up doing is bringing the riparian area to the road, creating a place where you can have interpretive nature viewing areas, and still have the passive recreation that people were still interested in the area. Lastly, the third area is new development. I just want to point something out that's important here. Of the 10 acres of city-owned property, only 10% is slated to be used for new construction. It's a very small amount, and you can see that area right here in orange, very small amount of, of property. So what the consultants and the community came up with is saying, you really need to maximize that development potential in the area and try to achieve your council goals right here. So what we're looking at is just some massing potential, differing heights, and differing heights that don't play by the rules of our current zoning. And you're also looking at a potential for a parking garage right here, near where the old Ice House was. You're looking at a possibility of including affordable housing in a mixed-use development. Some interesting public infrastructure that they have proposed is something called a pedestrian transition zone at the base of this development, and it's a way, since this development is in the flood plain area, it's a way to get people out of that roadway-level area into that next level of habitable space, and it's in orange in this area. Just a quick look at some development types that folks in the community thought were appropriate for the area. Again, something like this, because of the height, is not going to meet the current zoning, but these things also provide for views, and they have setbacks that were pretty, the community was pretty interested in seeing this diversity of architecture in the neighborhood. So a note on implementation, what that's going to be like if you choose to adopt this plan. So what I'll say is, it's going to be easy and hard. So there's some of these recommendations in here that you have already provided a lot of policy guidance on, and some of these things that you have already programmed into your five-year capital improvements plan. So those things are at the top. You've already been talking about those things, and it'll be easy to work with you on that. There are a few things at the bottom, providing a parking garage, implementing the pedestrian transition zone, and connecting to New Belgium, which I haven't even mentioned, because that's a big project, new bridge, that you're going to have to think about encouraging creative partnerships and how to maximize that development potential in the community. And what this brings me to is my very first recommendation, and that is that you work with staff on getting a deeper analysis on these last three items and some of the items that you may have found interesting. In particular, we'd like to work with PED to start that process. I'm going to ask, while I do my second recommendation, I'm going to ask Tom Gallagher, the lead consultant for the plan, to come up here, because he's going to close us out. The second recommendation is that you adopt the plan. So the Asheville Area Riverfront Redevelopment Commission recommends to you that you adopt the plan. You have that in your staff report, part of the resolution. And staff is recommending in particular, and there was support from this from the commission, that you consider adopting this as an update to the Wilma Dykman Riverway Master Plan, and that's going to reaffirm that that is still our guiding concept for the overall riverfront, for the community at large, as an active plan, but you also just think of it and adopt it as its own plan, that it can stand on its own, and we can evaluate progress on over the next coming five years, I would say. I'm bringing Tom up here, I'm asking him to tell me and you what he thinks the four most important things for implementation are on this plan from his consultant perspective. After that, we'll be closing, I'll be here for any questions. I know this was brief, and I know also that the chairman, the chairman of the Asheville Area Riverfront Redevelopment Commission is here, and she's got something to say to you as well, in public comment. Thank you, Tom.
Mayor and Council in public, thank you very much for this opportunity, I'm Tom Gallagher, and congratulations to all of you, most especially Kathy and Gary, for that wonderful news on RadTip, that is fantastic. You're eating, Mayor, and I'm very hungry. In any event, I think the four most important things to come out of this, Stephanie's already mentioned, number one, adopting this as an amendment that fits both into RadTip and as part of the Wilma Dykman Riverway Plan. Secondly, to develop the form-based code, you've seen the wonderful work that staff did on Haywood Road. It's that same sort of effort, and I think the, the River, the River Arts District is now ready for that sort of thing, and it can be a very special, very different, but very special form-based code for that part of the world. Absolutely maximize the redevelopment potential of both the open space and the develop, developable land which the city currently owns. That can get us into affordable housing, much greater density, and then finally encourage creative partnerships. There were some very interesting interchanges with Riverlink, with Norfolk Southern, very promising changes, discussions, Riverlink, Norfolk Southern, and some of the owners up on Robert Street, specifically Jesse Plaster, on being able to cross over the railroad line to provide a safe pedestrian access directly from the upper part of the River Arts District to the lower part. And those are, sort of, that's my very quick summary of a year and a half of, a lot of fun, actually. Got to tell you, the Riverfront Redevelopment Commission is the best commission I have ever worked with. They are a fantastic group of people, and it was a really delight to get to know them and their constituents. So I'll be available, as Stephanie is, for any questions.
Thank you. Patty, do you want to, speaking of the River Redevelopment Commission?
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Thank you all for letting me speak tonight. I, last time I was here, I said I am the chair of the Asheville Area Riverfront Redevelopment Commission, and I'm not speaking as that. Tonight, I actually am speaking as that, so. One of our guiding principles, as Stephanie mentioned, for our work is the Wilma Dykman Riverway Plan. That plan came into being in between like 2000 and 2004. So if you think about what was on the ground in 2000 and 2004, River Arts, River District Artists at the time had about 25 members. RDA now has 200-plus. There was no Klingman Cafe, there was no 12 Bones, there was no White Duck Taco, there was no Wedge Brewery, there was no All Souls Pizza. None of those people were here when the Dykman Plan was put together, so just something to keep in mind. If you take the Dykman Plan from 2000 to 2004, then we've gotten into RadTip, which started around 2011, and it's currently in its second consultant phase, and it is, we're getting to 100% construction drawings, and with this funding, theoretically is fully funded now, so that one will go forward. The Riverside Drive Development Plan, what it does is it puts a very fine grain on the broad brushstrokes that are the Wilma Dykman Riverway Plan. They looked, the consultants looked at and spoke and talked to Norfolk Southern about what we could and couldn't do. They talked to the MSD. They looked at what the French Broad River and what our stormwater permits allow us to do in riparian buffers and all that kind of stuff. So there's a much finer, sort of drilled-down version of, of what should exist on our riverfront, and it encompasses, I think that Tom, the figure that he used with us, is that he did over 500 interviews with all of our constituents. So what I would like to say is that in adopting this as an amendment to the riverfront, to the Wilma Dykman Riverway Plan, what you're getting is an update, a current assessment of what the, the River Arts District wants, because back in 2000 and 2004, there was no River Arts District. None of those people were here. So one thing to keep in mind is that the Dykman Plan and the Riverside Drive Development Plan don't always say exactly the same thing, so I would like to suggest that council suggests to staff that wherever those discrepancies do exist, to please look at the Riverside Drive Development Plan as the more current of the two and the more fine-grain of the two. So I think that's important. One of the, sort of, the last things to me is that I would like to thank the City of Asheville for all that it's done for the ADL Riverfront. Oops. Do you want me to stop? I got one more thing.
Okay.
Okay. One more thing is, so thank you for that, and to echo- Okay, thank you so much.
This item does require a motion. Yes. Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to thank all those people that have been mentioned already. We've been dabbling in that river for a long time now. This is a huge day. We've gone from the highs and lows in the last two or three minutes. It's pretty dang incredible to, Stephanie was working in the downtown development office and found a new life. It's really happened in a, in one sense, it seems like a very brief time, but then in another sense, it's been several years in getting here, and it, more than several. And a long way from that first Dykman Plan that was displayed down at the, what was the Methodist Church on Haywood Street in 2004? And here we are today, looking at something that's funded and plans are moving forward and that we started with just a transportation design down there and moving a long way. But we've got, great news is we've got 15 more miles to do, too, once we've done this. This is not the whole deal. So, this is huge tonight, and I just really am honored to make a motion to accept this RadTip Plan. And I'm not sure what we, what's officially called.
Resolution adopting the Riverside Drive Development Plan.
That.
As amendment to the Wilma Dykman.
As an amendment, and very importantly, as an amendment, the Riverfront Redevelopment Commission really felt it necessary to have told to us that this is the update. This is the one that is, this thing's going, it's going to be moving for many years, we think, and so, this is the latest and most important part of it.
Jan, I'd like to second your motion, and also, a great deal of thanks to everyone who's been involved in this and Stephanie's steering of so much of this. I do have, I have a couple of questions. I don't want to labor things too long, but I'm curious about the relationship with Norfolk Southern and where that is.
So, I'll answer that question. Like the City of Asheville, Norfolk Southern is an entity, not a person, so we have relationships with several different people at Norfolk Southern, everyone in government relations and track supervisors, and those, the development of that relationship is probably one of our number-one priorities moving forward in the next year because much of this can't be done without them. And I'll say that it looks promising. We have deeper relationships with those members of that entity than the city ever has before due to the work that Public Works crews have done on Lyman Street, due to the Quiet Zone application that the city partnered on, and due to the outreach that we've had for three years with them with their government relations staff.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, just a couple of comments.
Okay.
Really briefly. Some things I really love about this plan, in addition to all this cornerstone transportation piece that's going to create the momentum that that other 15 miles of the Dykman Riverway is going to need, this is going to provide that. I think the dominoes will fall in regards to those other 15 miles. I want to say yes to that massing on that land, and let's put there whatever we need to put there in order to meet the needs that are outlined in the plan. Live workspace for artists, have the parking needs met, do all these really aspirational pieces that are outlined here. I think that it's a really good document and something that we can fold our alternative gentrification work into as well and really see those things harmonize. Lastly, the budgeting for art within, whatever budget is there, I'd just like to kind of come out on the front end as being really strongly in favor of that at the higher end, at the 2%.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anyone else wishing to comment?
Comment here. In regard to the rehab of 14 Riverside Drive, Stephanie, you guys brought this to the PED. It was like two weeks ago, it seems like, and we asked for comments then. And having gotten this with the agenda, there are four options laid out for the sort of styles of rehabilitation of that. And as I thought through those yesterday, it seems to me that the thing, that the key thing that the city will be challenged to uniquely provide down there that no one else will is public restrooms.
Yes.
And, you know, there are various alternatives that might hand this over to an operator that could choose to close the doors at 5:00 or 6:00 or, you know, have a limited hours. I think the city will always be looked to, to provide that, that public restrooms element. So, I hope we will sort of make sure that we look after that first, and other things like our recreation amenities, partnering with a nonprofit, having a vendor in there that might do rentals and all would integrate with a plentiful, I think there'll be hundreds of people on the ground down there on summer days, just like there are in Chattanooga and other great river cities. We're going to be under great pressure to let them use the bathrooms, so let's get that first. That's my only comment, but I'm supportive. Thank you so much for the work.
That has nothing to do with how long this meeting's been. That's insuburbiancy.
Need more hours of it downtown, too.
Anyone else?
That's what we do downtown.
Okay, so, anyone else here wishing to make comment on this? We have a motion and a second. This is very exciting, and I'll just say that I look forward to watching all of this develop. And again, you know, similar to our Haywood Road corridor rezoning, you know, what I appreciate about this process is the community involvement and the community input, and this is very much a product of the community. So, that's kind of the name of the game here and our continuing theme. I appreciate it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Vice Mayor, I'm going to turn over the last item to you, new business B.
Thank you. As we covered two weeks ago, we have appointments to make to Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. We identified five candidates to fill three slots, and we've done some interviewing and reviewing of resumes. Since then, those candidates, and I'm going to start with you, Councilman Smith, so get ready.
Okay, I'm ready.
The five candidates that we have up for considerations are James Mastro Giacomo, Randall Barnett, William Erby, Laura Simulink, and Brian Alexander. We need three appointments out of that, so please name your three, sir.
I'll begin with Mastro Giacomo.
Great pronunciation. Thank you for correcting me.
Mr. Barrett and Ms. Simulink.
You must have meant Mr. Barnett.
What did I say?
Barnett, Barrett.
I got Mastro Giacomo right and I gave Barnett wrong? Okay.
Couldn't help it.
And I will do Mastro Giacomo, Barnett, and Simulink.
And I will go with those same three myself.
Ditto.
Ditto.
The same for me.
Same.
It seems unanimous, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I have two folks signed up to speak. The first is Christopher Charmante, who does not appear to be here. And the second is Timothy Sadler.
Good evening, once again, City Council, Madam Mayor. My name is Timothy Sadler, and the reason I came out tonight is to bring up the issue of the mystery cellphone towers that have been widely reported on Wired Magazine, The Daily Coast, Ash Vegas, have all pointed out that there are these rogue cellphone towers that are dotted around the country, and one just so happens to be here in Asheville. The reason that they're mystery towers or rogue towers is because they're not registered with the FCC, which means they're illegal. And I'm just hoping to bring light to this issue and see if anyone at the city has any awareness, or anyone in the press may be interested in digging down a little bit further. You know, they're really, they could only be there for people to do mischievous things. And I just wanted to bring that up here tonight, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make comment tonight? No? All right, do we have any announcements or anything before I gavel?
Zero, zero, top of the fourth.
Say it again?
Zero, zero, top of the fourth.
Oh, the tourists, the tourists, they're playing. Yep. Okay, all right. Pass your fingers. Yes, closed session.
I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. One, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the general statutes. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is NC General Statute 143-318.103. The statutory authorization is contained in NC General Stat 143-318.11A1. Two, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the client, attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to lawsuits involving the following parties, Caledonia LLC and the City of Asheville, Roger Ailey and the City of Asheville. The statutory authorization is contained in NC General Statute 143-318.11A3. And three, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area. The statutory authorization is contained in NC General Statute 143-318.11A4.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we will...